All right. Welcome, everybody, to the May 12th regular hearing of the Calaveras County Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order and get started with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any staff announcements? Not sure where to look at. Okay. And any agenda changes? There you are. So we will go ahead and open the general comment period, but I would like us to consider getting through the Planning Commission agenda minus the informational items so that the people who are here for the hearing board item can get heard this morning, as I suspect our informational item may take some time. So I will give the everybody an opportunity to comment on that, see if there's any objection to that. Do you see a problem with that, Julie or Sarah? Okay, thank you. Okay. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on an item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda today. So is there anybody who is here to give general public comment? Seeing none, nobody online that we're aware of? Great, thank you. Then we have no, no regular Planning Commission agenda items. Our informational item, I am proposing to delay till after our hearing board item. Is there anybody who has an objection to that?
No.
And nobody online? No. Great. Then we'll go ahead and do that. So we will adjourn the Planning Commission hearing at this point and reconvene as the Administrative Hearing Board. And I believe we, yes. So would you like to take oaths first before we do the general public comment?
So anyone that is willing to be sharing testimony today for the administrative hearing board, if you do a face scan, raise your right hand. So after I read the statement, you'll say I do or I will. Do you solemnly state, under penalty of perjury, that the evidence that you shall give in this issue or matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to be sworn in as the administrative hearing board?
No, because we're not giving testimony with regard to-
No, but I mean as officers of the board.
We don't need to be sworn in, no, thank you. So now there's an opportunity for general public comment on items of interest to the Administrative Hearing Board. So is there anybody who would like to provide general public comment not related to items on the agenda today? None, nobody online? Then we will go ahead and open the hearing. And I'm not sure who's leading this. We need to acknowledge that we have received correspondence. Sarah, who should, who should be leading us in this item?
I believe typically, yes, staff will begin with their presentation.
Okay. Well, no, I understand. Yeah, thank you.
Of course.
I just wondered if there was somebody who was going to kind of walk us through this. But then we'll go ahead and move on to the staff reports and-
Good morning, Board. Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. The matter before your Board is an appeal brought by Mr. Crivelli and Ms. Fitzgerald regarding a case for work without permit. The brief and the staff report that you were provided with is pretty lengthy, so what I'd like to do is just kind of pare it down to the specific matter at hand, and that is work without permits. So on June 10th, 2021, Code Compliance received a complaint stating that a domestic waterline had been cut and relocated without permission, leaving family temporarily without water. That waterline was serving 125 Sierra Trail. The Applings are the owners of that parcel. Code Compliance did respond, determined that the waterline was relocated. It was above ground and the process of the Code Compliance case commenced from there. Ultimately, the, the waterline is a domestic waterline. It is branching off from a meter supplied by CPUD. It is serving domestic water, potable water, to the Applings. And by definition, in the plumbing code, it is considered a water system or a plumbing system. Both the Uniform Building Code, sorry, the California Building Code and the California Plumbing Code both identify that the only thing that is exempt from a permit in regards to plumbing is the stopping of leaks and the clearing of clogs essentially. And so the requirement there is that a building permit be obtained to install the waterline per minimum plumbing code standards for domestic water pipe. In this case, the waterline is currently running on the surface of the ground. From, from the last inspection that we have made of the site, it was running on the surface, tied in from an existing waterline that travels along the creek side that is in a public utility easement, is then teed off from there, and it flows up the easement that is a public utility easement and driveway easement, and then takes a sharp turn and heads south on the property lines between the Appling's parcel and the Crivelli parcel. From there, it ties back into the existing underground waterline and continues to serve the Appling parcel. In this case, because the waterline is still above ground, it is subject to freezing. It's also subject to direct sunlight, which means the PVC pipe is not designed to be exposed to sunlight for extended periods of time. And when it does freeze, it does shut off the water supply to the Appling's parcel. Therefore, by California Health and Safety Code, whenever the water supply is not provided to that dwelling, it can be considered a substandard dwelling. So we have gone through the entire Code Compliance process to this point. We have met with the Crivellis on site. The location of the pipe, other than it being above ground and having some minor defects that can be corrected, the location appears to be adequate. And so the, the direction that we were hoping to get is that they could obtain the over-the-counter permit and place the waterline in the ground and receive an inspection to make sure it's compliant with code, and then they could bury it, and this matter is concluded. Essentially, is what we are asking your Board to do, is uphold the county's case and make the final recommendation to the Board Supervisors. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question. We received from Reba Davis, a copy, a clear copy of the parcel map.
Yes, sir.
Could you run us through which parcels we're talking about and where the easement is?
Yes, let me quickly pull that up for you. I apologize.
And where the various meters are.
Okay, looking at the map, if you're looking at the, the corner of Treat Avenue and Pope Street, if you go east from there, you will see a public utility easement. That is the approximate location of the meter that CPUD owns. From there, going south through that easement-
Excuse me, then what is that meter measuring? Just the water and issue here or multiple, multiple parcels or what?
That, that meter is for the Appling's parcel specifically.
Okay, and that's this first shaded section that says public utility easement?
Yes.
Just for clarification, we're looking at Exhibit B of the staff report addendum.
Well, I'm looking at something I've received from, okay, is this the addendum? Okay, yes. Okay, you're right.
Okay, from there, that waterline travels south, and it enters into the, please, it says 15-foot private access and PUE directly south. And then from there, it exits the ground and travels east through the public utility easement and driveway easement that is, I believe that's a 30-foot. Let me make sure I find that. Yeah, 30-foot private access and PUE. And it travels east until it reaches that property line between Parcels 3 and 4, and then it turns and heads south. And because I, I will state for the record that we did not have a surveyor measure the location or find the pins, but it appeared to be traveling plus or minus a foot along the property line between those two parcels until it tied back into the existing underground waterline.
That's where it is now.
That's correct.
So where was, and the existing continued south and then crossed diagonally across Parcel 3, is that?
I was not there to witness the location of the pipe, and I don't know if it was completely removed or merely teed off of, but according to the appellate, it was traveling diagonally through Parcel 3.
So it came down from Pope Street on the public utility easement hatched area. Then it entered the other private access and public utility easement, somehow entered Parcel 3?
Correct.
Okay. And then it has been moved from some point on Parcel 3 back to the public utility easement or down along the boundary?
It's currently placed within the utility easements.
Okay. Going to Parcel 4, and then it enters Parcel 4 to service the residence. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do you have any additional questions for Doug or Julie?
I do.
Okay.
In the file, there's an email string attached to the appeal with dates starting May 14th and ending May 18th between Crivelli or Fitzgerald and the county. And that was before the May 28th incident where the pipe was broke. What was that email string about? It ends, I think, with Monica Dunbar's message saying you don't need a permit for an irrigation line.
Which page is that, sir?
So I believe it's part-
May 14th to May 18th.
It's part of Attachment K to the staff report.
Okay, thank you.
I believe it's part of the appeal packet that the appellant submitted. If it's helpful, I believe it starts on page 60 of the entire packet, but I realize that in a hard copy, that may not be helpful.
I think date stamping in the future might be helpful.
Take just a moment, apologize.
Right.
I'm wondering what was happening there before the pipe was broke.
Okay, so the email chain here is between the Crivellis and Ms. Delbar, who formerly worked for the Building Department managing the front counter. So in that chain, there was a discussion about whether a building permit was required for an irrigation line. And the direction that was given at the time is the irrigation line did not require a permit. The reason is that while the plumbing code does require that we obtain permits for everything except stopping of leaks and clearing of drains, traditionally in this county, for irrigation, specifically limited to watering plants, watering livestock, those water systems, we do not issue building permits for. We reserve that for domestic or commercial where the public or individuals will be actually drinking that water or using it for, for domestic purposes. So traditionally, this county does not issue permits for watering livestock or watering vegetation.
So were Crivelli and Fitzgerald then seeking advice with respect to whether they needed a permit to install an irrigation line themselves? Was that it?
Or to move an irrigation line specifically?
Or to move an irrigation line.
Yes.
Okay. And then when the appellant's contractor, Parget, hit and broke the existing waterline? It may have been just an accident. There was no permit required for that, obviously, because they didn't intend to break it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so once they hit the waterline, there would have been a leak?
Correct.
Now, could they have simply repaired that waterline?
Correct.
And without a permit? Just fixed it and everything goes on?
You're right. They could have repaired it in place without a building permit.
But they didn't do that. Instead, they rerouted it and constructed a new one.
That is correct.
And that's what triggers the code requirements and the violation for not getting a permit.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have some questions involving the points and authorities that are filed on behalf of the department, if it's the appropriate time to ask. On page 5 of the points and authorities quoting a definition of plumbing system in the California Plumbing Code, it talks about all-inclusive things that are included, but then after listing all that thing, it says within the property lines of the premises. What meaning do you give to that? What premises are they talking about?
My interpretation, and I would defer to Mr. Oliver for historic interpretations, is that any property lines that you're doing the work on.
Okay. Do you have a follow-up?
I was just going to say, I noticed that also in rereading that code section, and that that's typically because when it leaves the property line of the premises, it's within the purview of the utility district. But that's, this is a more unusual situation where it theoretically would be crossing in an easement on an adjacent property.
Yeah, I don't imagine that the-
Yes. Can you guys share that?
It's quite different. I don't imagine, I mean, if you had a contractor who was doing work on three parcels, yeah, I don't think that you would interpret it to say that the contractor only needs a permit on one parcel and not the rest. So it just, it seems like it would be an absurd interpretation to say that it's limited to the one that that contractor happens to live on, maybe not the two neighbors he was hired to work on as well.
Well, and also two points to make in this is that, one, an easement is still within the boundaries of the property. Otherwise, it would be on private, or it would be on public land or in a right-of-way.
Correct.
In addition, the, the building code does require the, the person doing the work is responsible for obtaining the permit and requesting the inspections. So if someone is doing work on someone else's parcel, it's, it's our responsibility, the Building Department, to make sure that they have obtained the permission from the neighbor to work on that property.
Then another question. It says appellants carry the burden of proof on appeal, and I didn't see in the statutes anything that assigned burden of proof.
And I also did not see anything assigning burdens of proof in the statutes. And so my assertion is based more, I mean, it's based on two things. One is the general concept that when somebody files an appeal, they carry the burden of proof, which has been my experience in court. I realize this is a little different. But also the language of 8.06-600C, where it says the AHB shall hold an administrative hearing to determine whether the conditions existing on the property constitute a nuisance under this chapter, or whether there is any other good cause why those conditions should not be abated, or why the fines levied should be reduced. And that order to show cause language is repeated in 8.06-600F2. And given the order to show cause language, that also seemed to suggest that there would be start, we would start with a presumption that the public official has carried out his duties and correctly cited the alleged violator, and that it would be up to the violator to show why we should not go forward on the citation.
What's the basis for that presumption?
The, the language seems to be, because in my, in my experience in court, an order to show cause, the person who has to show up and show cause carries the burden of proof.
Okay, so the order to show cause is directed at the appellants here?
Yes, so it says, let me, maybe looking at the entire quote, 8.06-600 pursuant to Government Code 25845, upon timely written request of an owner or occupant who wishes to appeal, the AHB shall hold an administrative hearing to determine whether the conditions existing on the property constitute a nuisance, or whether there's any other good cause why they shouldn't be abated. And I, and that language led me to believe that the burden of proof would rest with the appellate. I will say that even if the commission does not think the burden of proof rests with the appellate, I believe we can carry our burden of proof in this case. But, but I believe that the language and my, just my, literally just my experience with appeals and orders to show cause suggested that interpretation.
So in both of those parts of the statute, or the coordinates that you cite, it's, it's an alternative. It's either it's bad or it's good. I mean, it sounds, I-
I mean, there's, I didn't find any case law on point, so it's certainly up to the commission how it thinks the board intended that language to read.
Moving on, what do you think the CPUD letter proves that says that it provides service?
I didn't, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
What do you think, you, you cite the CPUD letter that says it does provide service? Doesn't say whether it provides domestic water service or irrigation water service, and it doesn't say where the line is or what the meter was. What do you think that letter establishes?
I think, so the parcel, and I don't know if this was anywhere in your packet, I do have an email from Gina from Planning. The parcel is Zone R1, which allows a single-family residence, residential uses in that zone. And I did have an opportunity to speak with Ms. Appling. I haven't met her in person. I don't know if she's here. And I, you know, her, her letter to the commission indicated in some of the documents that were already submitted in the packet, that the, when the water was shut off, she had to call CPUD to put it back on. And so my assumption is that a residential house, the effect of the water was, the effect of the line being cut was water being shut off immediately in her house with people using it at the time. And she could, I would ask her to maybe explain this in further detail to the commission, combined with the fact that it was public utility water and there's a house on the property.
But the public utility water, that, that public utility also provides irrigation water, isn't it?
You know, I, to be honest, I have CPUD and I don't know that, well, I know, I don't know them to provide anything other than potable water. I can say that. And so even if it was, even if hypothetically, I don't have any evidence that there was a, that there was a separate line just serving irrigation, but even if it, if it was potable, I believe under the California Building Code, it would still require a permit. I understand that mere irrigation lines, the county has not historically granted permits, but I don't believe that this particular potable water line was limited to irrigation or that, I don't, I have not heard from Ms. Appling, and I would maybe ask her to explain that she has a second account just for irrigation water.
Right, so the, the letter from CPUD itself does not speak to that question?
That spoke more to the fact that there were complaints that there was no illegal, that there was no legal water. I had read some of Mr. Crivelli's complaints, suggesting water was coming illegally from a creek. And so I wanted to verify that there was service, public water service to that property.
Yeah, okay. And, and we don't have anything from CPUD saying, and our lines run here and there to get to that residence?
I believe Mr. Oliver had some difficulty getting cooperation with CPUD, or they didn't want to involve themselves too much with the lines beyond the meter, but maybe he can speak more to that.
So it's, it's not that they were being difficult, it's just that, once they place their meter, everything after the meter is the responsibility of the, of the landowner, not the, the utility, but it is part of the, the service that was being provided to that residence. So we do know from visual confirmation that those waterlines are buried in that easement, and they do surface at the edge of the creek line. And we do know that those are connected to that meter, because if the meter is shut off, that, that home loses water.
Yeah, and that's the meter on Pope Street?
That's correct.
Okay. And, but you don't know where the lines run under Parcel 3, the Crivelli-
No.
-parcel. And so there is still is some water running in CPUD lines, the way you see it, in Parcel 3?
No.
To where they, well-
Insofar as it follows the easement.
Okay, they're after the meter. Carrying CPUD water, how's that?
Correct.
And it surfaces where the oak tree fell. So there is, there's still some CPUD water running through pipes that are on Parcel 3 at this point?
Only in the location of the, of the easement, as far as I can tell. I don't know what was removed.
Where's, I thought the patch and rerouting was done from where the break was in the oak tree?
No. No, it was, it was disconnected at the creek line, and it was relocated.
Where's the creek line on this parcel map?
I gotta go back to that. Go back to the map, just a moment.
I appreciate you clarifying that, because I was under the wrong impression.
Here we are. Okay. Okay, so where the line was cut and reestablished is approximately, if you follow from Pope Street down the easement, it is modified inside that 15-foot private access, PUE. Now, this, to best of my knowledge, we did not have a surveyor on site, but from visual inspection on that premises, that's where it was cut and relocated. And from there, the entire line was rerun along the 15-foot easement down the 30-foot-
The 15-foot easement's the one on the top of Parcel 3?
Yes.
Okay. So is that where the break occurred then?
No.
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 Okay. So, I, I, I just, I don't understand, the break occurred, I understand that they moved the pipe out into the easement, but I didn't, I don't understand where they reconnected to the, to, to where it was before the break?
Okay, so, yeah, this will be approximate, but where they reestablished the connection, if you follow the lot line between parcel three and parcel four, if you follow that lot line south out of the easement, I want to say a third of the way, if not half the way down that property line, they connected, or reconnected to the line that was already in the ground. They did expose that connection, or that's, expose it, cut it, and reconnected at that location.
Where was, at that point, where was the line in the ground?
The original line appeared to be running diagonally from that point northwest back towards the corner of parcel three.
But, okay, so, there was, so they reconnected on that, on that property line, but then they must have followed that up and gone up and dug in and found where the water was coming on the easement before the diagonal cut?
Yes, they, they located the terminations and cut it and relocated the entire line.
Cut it there, okay, that's what I didn't understand. So, there's, right now, there's, as far as you know, there's not, no water line on parcel three that isn't within the easement or along the property line with parcel four, is that right?
I'm sorry, can you clar, can you clarify?
Yeah, well, parcel three, as you pointed out, has an easement at the top. I mean, that, that's why it's an easement.
Right.
Okay. The, from the meter now, out on Pope Street, there is no point of this, this particular line that runs through parcel three except that's within the easement.
Is that?
Is that correct?
Correct, as far as I can, as far as I know from visual inspection.
Thank you.
And is that the line that's on the surface?
I think he's talking about parcel three.
Yes.
That it, okay.
That is the line that is now on the surface and visible, correct?
Correct.
That's in the easement, that's in the easement, okay, so it's now on the surface.
It's no longer inside parcel three, it is now running along the easement, yes.
I read in there where they were saying it was only, when it was running diagonally, did they have a permit to run that, do you know, originally?
We have no record of when that water line was placed, or whether it was done, I mean, the, the, the building department didn't exist prior to 1970. I'm not certain when it was placed, who placed it, or whether it was in conjunction with the home that was placed on the Appling's parcel on parcel four.
Okay.
But that home was placed in like 2002, I think, something like that, correct?
Right, with, with, with things that are in the ground in this county, I, I, yeah, I can't say one way or the other.
Right, so, it's possible there was something on that property previously, and the line existed previous to 1970. The diagonal line.
I couldn't say, but if I was to, if I was to make an educated guess, that water line may have been installed in conjunction with the manufactured home. The timing of the subdivision or the creation of those parcels in conjunction with the, the manufacturer home placement is, is going to tell the tale on that, but it was, it was very difficult to determine whether that water line was permitted or not. Unfortunately, we just can't say.
What, oh, excuse me, are you?
But that's not really what the issue is here, anyway. What the real issue is, is that it was relocated without a permit?
Correct.
And it was put above the ground?
Correct.
Okay.
And what should the public record show about locations of water lines?
Currently, the building department asks for a site plan generally when there's the sighting of a, a water line for domestic use, similar to when there's a, any underground plumbing system, liquid waste, for instance. So, the site plan would identify the size of the pipe, the depth, and the general location. Our inspectors make sure that it is placed per that site plan, and that, that site plan is kept indefinitely. So, you won't, you won't have a record of it at the utility company, but currently, our building department keeps those records. Back then, those records were not kept.
Okay, so it wasn't any surprise that you couldn't find a public record for this line?
Correct.
And is, is the residence that's being served by this line, is, is the manufactured housing that you were referring to, or?
Correct.
Okay. And is there a, is there also a recreational vehicle, or a trailer, or something on that parcel?
There was a case open for that, I don't know if it currently is there, I, I haven't visited the site in several months.
As far as you know, that, the line does, that serves the manufactured housing, and not anything else on, on parcel four?
That is correct.
Commissioner Parker, any other questions?
I, not right now, I don't.
I have one more. Is it the case that both parcel three and parcel four were at one time owned by the same person?
That is my understanding.
And so, if they wanted to put a water line to parcel four, it looks like what they did is just take the shortest route across parcel three, because they owned both of them way back when. That'd be an educated guess?
I would say that would be a good guess.
One other question for counsel, a question was raised on the points of authorities in the declaration of counsel as to having the, the county council listed on those pleadings, as well as the deputy county council that's filing those, those documents. Can you speak to the propriety of that?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you asked.
On your, on your points of authorities in your declaration?
Yes.
I, I understand that Captain Cravelli is, is raising an issue that listed as counsel is both yourself as the counsel for the Code Compliance Division, and the county council who's advising us.
But my name is on the caption also.
Yeah.
The simple explanation for that is, obviously, we are both within the office of county council. I am the county council, Julie is a deputy in my office. On, on this case, as in other cases, where we have, you know, where one of us is representing a client that may have an, in an advocacy role, we separate ourselves, we create an ethical wall, we don't discuss the merits of, of the case in that way. I can advise you, as the fact finder, and, and Julie can advocate for the department in this case, and, and there is case law to that, to the fact that that is proper.
So...
That's just the stationary header, I will say. I did take, I did take Ms. Edwards' name off the signature line, where usually she signs as county council. In this case, of course, she has no supervisory role with respect to what I write, for better of...
I didn't see the brief until everyone else did.
So, so, anyway, um...
So, this is, this is, the listings on, at the top of the documents is just showing where you fit administratively?
That's our standard office caption, everybody's on there.
It's essentially, it's essentially a letterhead, except for the pleading form. And, and as, as Ms. Edwards said, this is actually a very common practice in a small, unfortunately, for a lot of small county councils offices. It's been addressed very thoroughly in the courts, and we're very aware of what the rules are to ensure due process.
Thank you.
Are we ready to hear from the appellant?
We bet. First of all, we're going to ask for a little patience today. We're at a little bit of a disadvantage not having a table in order to put out documents, so we're going to have to dig a little bit of stuff up. The first thing I'd like to do is introduce myself. I'm Stephen Cravelli, I'm United States Coast Guard Licensed Captain, and this is very relevant, because in order to do so, I have to do a lot of rules and regulation, a lot of testing, which require a 90 percentile scoring, and a lot of that involves maps, and the understanding of maps and whatnot. I'd also like to, and I can produce my document here, goes through a full homeland security check. I actually have a hundred mile offshore rating, so that means our government believes that I will uphold the law at all times, which is my sworn oath, because I can go 88 miles into international waters. So, I, I can't mess around, I gotta, gotta follow the rules. This is a contractor's license I held at one time, and this is relevant, because I was a contractor for several years, at which time I was recruited by the International Painters and Tapers Union to run commercial high-rise projects in downtown San Francisco and around the Bay Area, with all of the massive construction boom down there, with commercial projects with the dot-com boom and whatnot. The very relevant part here is conflict of interest, which is something that we're touching on today. I joined the union in the end of 1996, my license was lapsing in 97, and as, because of conflict of interest, because I'll be running projects, I'll have access to contractors and project managers and real estate developers, I have to surrender my license, so that I don't take work from the union and run a business on the side, because it's a conflict of interest. We're bringing this up here today, because it's a very important issue. There's something in the law called transactional disqualification, so that means if your law firm has a bunch of lawyers involved, and one of them's handling a case like here today for the county, the other ones are all automatically disqualified. In fact, they, they could, could have sanctions issued against them for continuing to represent. That's transactional disqualification is what that, what that definition is. So, I have a bunch of definitions here that are all very relevant to this, and I appreciate, looks like you people really did your homework, and you asked some good questions, but I don't think that all the answers have been truthful, I think there's some false and misleading statements, and those are relevant under these definitions of attorney misconduct. So, we'd like to give these to everybody, so we know what we're talking about.
Right.
If I might have to share, because...
Yeah, we've spent the fortune on copying and trying to get evidence to you people, and we'll discuss a little bit about that as well. Did you get our 80-page packet of, of evidence, after the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, it sounds like you did, and you, you've addressed some of our concerns, so we really appreciate you spending some time with this. This is like a homework project, so...
So, you have 15 minutes to make your presentation.
That doesn't sound too...
So, you know, I, I'm just...
That's okay.
Making sure that you want to prioritize your most important points.
Okay, and again, I would like to raise objection to that. This has been going on for a year, and we, we really feel like we should have the opportunity to be heard in our entirety, so, but I'll, I'll try and keep it brief. There were some questions?
Where should we get this?
Okay, all right.
And the irrigated water line?
Okay, the first definition that I would like to read is regarding attorney misconduct. Attorney misconduct is unethical illegal conduct by an attorney. It may include conflict of interest, false or misleading statements, hiding evidence, failing to disclose all relevant facts, and arguing a position while neglecting to disclose prior law, which might counter the argument. And those, those things come in today. The other thing is, I'd like to immediately address the PUE definition of a public utility easement, because they're referring to that as someplace that it's okay for this line to be, and we need to dispel that myth right away. PUEs in California arise from the terms of Government Code Section 66475, which provides that it's a condition of approving a subdivision map, a local government may require the subdivider to dedicate real property for PUEs. And I'm going to skip down to where it's in bold, these easements are not granted to the county. Instead, these easements are expressly dedicated to the purpose, to public utility purposes. Basically, it's an access easement for trucks. Even if a utility company is going to use some of that land, they still need to get a grantee easement, and that brings me to a map here that seems to be, that we submitted, you should have this one here, it's from our title company and our...
We have that, that was in the packet you submitted, we have it.
Okay, this is from our title search, so this was before we even took the property, because my main concern was the private access easement, which in Ms. Moss Lewis's letter, there's a 30-foot, she refers to as public access easement, and that's incorrect. If you, if you look closely at that letter, I believe it's August 9th or June 9th, something like that, you're aware of the letter, okay, on number one, at the page, it says, "Public access easement," and then it says, another incorrect or very inaccurate part of that is it says, "Easement continues 81 feet into the neighboring property where the meter is located." And there's no meter there, the meter is out on Pope Street, and there was a reference about the pipe coming out of the creek, as if that was what we thought was the irrigation line. That's the pipe in question. It crosses a state creek, California State Waterway, No Name Creek, coming from Pope Street, it goes underneath that, there's no grantee easement, and, and no LSAA on file, which is a lake and stream bed alteration agreement, which would be required for it to be a legal domestic water line. They're, they're talking about domestic water line, but they're leaving out the all-important permitting part. This structure was put on the property in 2002, and that's not 100 years ago, it's not prior to 1978. They would still have to have the water line's inspection, and, and from their own building doc, code, or building department requirements for a building permit, you have to have, well, do you have that document here, excuse me? I have that right here, and I'll read from it. This is, these are the procedures to obtaining a building permit, and the most important part of that is the site map plan. It, it, it's the first requirement, and then down at the bottom of the page, it says, "Additional documents that may be required." Proof of legal access, a recorded easement, court adjudication, et cetera. That doesn't exist, and we've established that there's no grantee easement for that line to go across the middle of our property, and that would be required for that line to have been a legally permitted line attached to the house that was put there in 2002.
So, there is no need for you to provide us information that you have previously provided? We had it.
Okay, we want this on the public, public record. It's important that, that these things, and I appreciate what you're saying, but I don't...
Your, your entire appeal packet was provided to the commission, and it is part of the reg, it was part of the record, yeah. Yes, so we, so, if you want to point out something, just because you want to make sure that we're familiar with the piece...
10-foot from the title company here?
Yes, we have that.
There's no easements for underground utilities.
Thanks.
So, so, in order for this water line to go across the middle of our property, there would have to be an underground easement on record for that, and that would even predate 1978.
And Davids.
And, and Davids. The problem here is that this water pipe was above ground before we bypassed it. The line is still where it originally was, diagonally across our property, we did not remove it on advice of Andrew Turner.
Still there?
It's still there, and we left it there for a reason, because when, when the water line was hit and broken, we were told, "Don't move it," because it needs to be inspected as it is. As you can see in the photographs, there's a gate post, which is at the northwest corner of our property, and you can see the water line entering our property. They've referred to our CPUD, request for CPUD water inspection. Irrigation lines, irrigation lines are provided with domestic water or potable water as well. With our interchange with Monica Delbar and the email, we're asking for a building permit, because to add any new feature to a piece of property, you need a site map plan, you need a permit, and you need easements in order for them to be there. All of those are missing from the public record.
Totally.
Totally entirely.
So, but it needs to be read in its entirety. You brought up, and he's saying we were just asking about an irrigation line. That's not true. We were seeking a lot improvement permit, a permit for a line that would provide domestic water to our house that we are eventually going to build our 20-by-20 home. So in order to do that, we needed to get permission from the neighbor. We had talked to CPUD. They said, "We don't put the meters on the other side of the creek where their meter is located." They put them on the other side of the bridge because you can't run a water line underneath a creek without all the documents that I have mentioned. So that should have been the first heads-up to them, that this water line is wrong, it's going to their property. Again, we exposed some of it where it enters our property. It's still there. It's not 12 inches deep. And again, there's no grantee and it's not on a site map plan. We asked very specifically with this about Monica Delbar about a site map plan because we know that we're adding a new feature. I know that I've been a contractor and worked in construction for 30 years. And that's why we went to a lot of trouble to make sure it was clear what we're trying to do here and that we are above board and legal. So this argument...
Site map plan would include everything.
Yeah, the site map plan would include everything. If there was one on file, we never would have hit this one. You had mentioned, are there other utilities on our property? He said, "No, that's not true." There are PG&E boxes on our property. There's underground lines. There's a letter in there from Johnny Hilton of PG&E saying that these are dangerous lines and they do need to be addressed by code compliance. The meter itself, there's a photograph in there. And this is all relevant because it's a pattern, a systematic pattern of code enforcement not doing its job. They're not doing its job. And this is important. Yesterday, the county sheriff, when we came up here, we went to our property first. And there's a gate in the picture, in the packet, a picture of the cattle gate, which is at the northwest portion of our property. We put that in to keep the neighbors off of our property because they kept trespassing on our property. And their excuse is that they need to access their water line, which is above ground. And there's a valve there right before it enters the creek. That is not a code compliant line for that section to be existing there. It was there prior to our purchasing our property. We advised them of that and they ignored that. They said, "There's no problem. That's okay." It isn't. It's a code violation complaint. But this is part of why we don't want their lines on our property, is that this becomes an excuse to come across our property whenever they want and to go into the neighbor's property, who they've had problems with. It's not a good situation. And this comes back to another issue of these disputes with neighbors. The disputes with us, with the neighbors are about utilities that are noncompliant. We have no reason to have arguments with people. We come here, we do our own thing, and we don't even talk to these people. And they'll pretty much acknowledge that. But when we came here yesterday, the lock was cut, the gate was left open, and we called out the sheriff for a trespassing report. It was obvious to us from the ATV tracks that went across our grass because no one's been there. So the grass is high. They had carved a roadway and gone onto the neighboring property. The sheriff came and asked Kelsey Appling, "Did you go on that property?" And she said, "Yes, I went there because people are turning off our water and I need to access the valve." So again, it's not compliant to have a water valve above ground on their domestic supply line. That's a code violation and that's been ignored. When we were asking about irrigation lines, that's, we didn't. They brought that up. We said that we want to put in a domestic water line, but initially it will be used for irrigation so that we can plant trees and start our lot improvement and to mix cement for, to start our construction process.
Okay. So that's...
Yeah, the whole reason why we contacted them, we knew this water line breakage would become an issue because the spigot that's in the photo, it should be somewhere, is right in the middle of the property where the line bisects it. And to remove the large tree, he had to maneuver around that area and he said, "This is going to get broken." I said, "So to move all the rest of the tree first, and we'll save that for last, minimize the breakage time." Well, he hit the line up at the top of the property where it crosses the fence. So at that point, I had already had all that line in place for our own water project. We were seeking a permit and that's why we didn't bury it. That's why it wasn't buried because we realized when they said, "You don't need a permit for irrigation lines." We're not putting in irrigation lines. We're putting in our property water and we know for any new added feature, you do need a site map plan. And that's the problem, that the house next door has no site map plan on record, is required. So you can't just assume everything's legal because the house is there and these things don't exist. It's just the opposite. You have to assume that it's not legal and you have to investigate these things and see what's missing. So as far as breaking this line goes, yeah, the line got broken. No one knew it was there. So what we did is immediately, I had my line in place. I said, "The fastest way to get this hooked back up, get them their water back, is to splice into this and bypass this section until it can be inspected and determined it's not code compliant." That's very, very important. That's why it was left there. As far as not needing a permit to fix a leak, that's true. You don't need it to fix a leak. You need a permit to repair a broken water line. And we went in immediately. They came out and told us, "The water's turned off." We called the building department. We called the sheriff. Nobody came out. Nobody came out. So we left it where it was so that it could be inspected and so that we could get, because our understanding at this point is it should be removed from the property. And that's why our attorney, Andrew Turner, who wrote these letters, reiterated the important factors here, is that there's no grantee easements for utilities on our property.
Mrs. Appley Crawford did have.
Yes. Actually, that's the interesting point. So they came out, they said they need their water turned back on. They said, "We're just making sure that the glue dries. We're trying to get it back on as quickly as possible for you. We've addressed the situation." And I said, "But you really need to get this off the property." So the following, this was on the 28th. On June 5th, they had an electrician call me. He said he was a licensed electrician. His name is Jared Devers. And I have the documents here. I'm not going to dig them up right now because obviously the clock's ticking here. But I will submit those as evidence. He said he was calling on behalf of the Applings. He wants to come over to the property and address the power meter on our property and the plumbing. And I said, "Great, hallelujah. But you guys need to be licensed and you need to have insurance." I said, "Can you email me those documents?" And Mr. Devers said, "Well, actually, I'm not being truthful with you. I'm a licensed handyman, but not an electrician." So I said, "Well, get anyone that you can to call me and I will come up and meet with them on the property, give them full access. But it's just you've got to be licensed and insured and you've got to get the permits." Again, no one ever called back. They sat here forever. Finally, when Reba Davis came out to do the inspection, she only wanted to look at it from the Applings property. And I said, "No, you have to come over and see where the pipe is sitting above ground." And you have pictures of that, where the pipe comes out of the creek and turns and the valve is there. They, if they did a proper inspection, they would have determined at that time that this line is illegal for a lot of reasons. And it should be removed. And that's what we were waiting for. I never refused to fix the line, even in situ, as situated, the word they like to use. I tried to do that. When Reba Davis came out, she said, "I said, 'Great, you're finally here to get rid of the electrical, illegal electrical and water.'" And she said, "No, I'm here to cite you." And I said, "Well, what are you talking about? You know, this line's illegal." She said, "No, I'm here to cite you." And I said, "Please inspect the whole line." Finally, she came down and looked at where it comes out of the creek. And then she said, "Well, I mean, I'm going to cite you." So I went and said, "Well, I'll come and get a permit right now to repair a broken water line and fix it where it originally was." I should have been granted that opportunity. I'm supposed to get a verbal warning? I didn't get that. When I went to the permitting counter in the building department, Monica Delbar and Dia were both there, wonderful gals. And they said, "We're not going to give you a permit. Doug Oliver wants to have a meeting with you." So I met with him, Sabrina Cable, and Ms. Davis. And I said, "You know, I'm just trying to get a permit to fix a line. There's no need to go through all this." And he said, "No, we're going to cite you, but I can't do anything until I talk to the lawyer first." We escalated things because our lawyer contacted the county, Mr. Toffinelli, about the illegal electric meter because he wasn't satisfied with Ms. Moss Lewis's determination that it's okay and the county has no responsibility for public safety regarding...
Captain Correlli, we've run out of time. But I, so I want to raise what I think is a crucial question. In your papers, you are claiming that this is an irrigation line.
According to their determination...
No. You are claiming that this is an irrigation line. What is your proof of that? That it's irrigation, not potable water?
Proof is there are no permits on file. There's no grantee easement for that line to exist across our property. And there's no site map plan is required for a legal domestic water line under the code regulation in 105.1. It says a plumbing system under the regulated code. The fact of the matter is that you can't call it something in the absence of documentation just because it's a home. Let me explain one more thing here. Is that if you run a garden hose between two homes or between a meter out on the street and run a garden hose out to a home and hook it to the water heater so it feeds the property, that, under what they're using, is a domestic water line. And that's just not true. You have to have the documentation that says that this was legally permitted.
Okay, so just one moment. So your time is up. You have provided a lot of information that repeats information that you had already provided to us and that we've had an opportunity to read. So is there anything that you, any additional information that we haven't heard about that you think is important? And you have just one minute to get back.
Please read the evidence submitted. It's clear to me that we're not getting a fair turn here.
So...
Let me bring up, please, you said additional information.
Right. Thank you.
Under 8.06600, it says, "If I file a timely appeal, I will get a hearing." It doesn't say anything about a time limit anywhere on that. In addition to the fact, we did file a timely appeal. We filed it to their first administrative citation issued on January 5th. And we sent in our packet. And these guys intercepted it. It didn't get to the AHB. It was intercepted. They reread all the information and then they sent it back with a new NOV. We didn't ask for that. We didn't ask for all this extra time. What we wanted is someone to really look at the facts. And that is that I did not refuse to fix this line. What the argument is, is that he's telling me that we have to put it where the bypass is. And that's not true. That's a violation of our property rights. And that's what this is really all about, is that our property rights are being violated here.
But also, that's there. And again, that's a good point, Alana. The as-built permit, we all know what that means, is that something was built and then, but you didn't get a permit for it first. So you would have to open up the walls or whatever and look at it. That's not what this is. We're not saying that this was as-built. And that's why that permit is inappropriate for this. What we would have to do for an as-built in this situation, because it is a new added feature. It's not as-built. This is a new added feature. They're even saying that this is added line. We would have to go and get a site map plan and it would have to go through the planning department. Again, the planning, this is deceptive and it's false and misleading statements. And that's why the attorney misconduct notation here is very, very relevant. Captain Correlli, back on the irrigation, question of irrigation water. Do you have any proof that CPUD has any irrigation lines, which they do have elsewhere in the county, irrigation lines in this area of San Andreas?
No, there's no proof of anything. That's the whole point. There's no proof of legally permitted lines, which are equally...
I'm talking about in the area. Does CPUD only provide potable water?
CPUD is only required to, anything after their meter is a private utility.
Yes, but getting to that meter, you're claiming this is irrigation water.
I'm not. What I'm saying is...
You did it in the documents. You're no longer claiming that's irrigation water.
He's claiming that because there is, that there is no mapping showing a legal installation of a water service from the meter to the residence...
Correct.
That calling it a potable or domestic water line is inaccurate. Is that, that's your contention, right?
Well, my contention actually here is that an irrigation line would still be served by a potable source.
I understand that, but the reason that you are calling the line an irrigation line...
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I was, I apologize.
So your contention is because there's no documentation for the line, it would be inaccurate to define it as a domestic water line?
No. It's inaccurate to say that it's a legal service line, a domestic, yes.
Same.
Yes. Under the regulation, a domestic line, something feeding a home, still requires permit in order for it to be considered a domestic line. It's not just that it comes from a potable source and goes to a home. It actually has to be legally installed as well.
Right. We understand that.
On the listing, it said water to site. When we asked our realtor what they meant, that was because the spigot was here. And before we bought that, I called the water department and said, "Is there a meter serving this?" And she says, "No, it must be irrigation coming down from that house." And I said, "Well, then there's not water to the site." And that was even part of the negotiation of the price. It also says electricity to the site. But there's scabbed-in lines underground that make it dangerous. PG&E actually filed a claim to open that. Also, the Department of Fish and Game was filing a claim about crossing the creek with no LSAA. So there's other agencies looking at it that say it is wrong one way or the other, whatever you want to call it. A duck is a duck.
Okay. I think, why don't you go ahead and take your seat? We're going to go ahead and give an opportunity for the public to comment if there's anybody interested in providing additional comments.
Yeah.
We may have additional questions for you.
Okay. But again, I would like to object on the record that I don't feel that we're being given a fair and impartial hearing, especially in light to the conflict of interest with county council. I think that our time's cut short. This isn't just $661. This has cost us thousands of dollars over time and lost opportunity and missed work trying to get code enforcement to actually look at this and do its job. And I think the sheriff's comment yesterday, when he came out and addressed the trespassing issue, and he asked me if I wanted to arrest Ms. Appling because she was in clear violation of a trespassing order that we have gotten, I said, "No. If they have a problem with their water, they can just hop the fence and flip the switch." And he said, "Why is there a valve on a service line to a home above ground in the first place? That's not...
May I ask you to take your seat now? Thank you.
He said, "The county really should..."
May I ask you to take your seat now? Thank you. And Madam Chair, just as a reminder, after a public comment and an opportunity for rebuttal by staff, they will have an opportunity for rebuttal.
Exactly.
Sorry, may I just briefly ask, Commissioner, we, I know that Ms. Appling had been asked to be treated as a party because of the situation affects her property. I didn't know what order the commission wanted to hear from her as well.
I think we'll hear from her under this public comment. So, are the Appleys here? Somebody would like to speak?
I'd just like to say thank you for involving us, since it does involve us. And I'd like to say that before the folks bought the property...
Can I ask you to just get a little closer to the mic? Thank you.
And I'm Marilyn Appling. My husband and my daughter are here. Before they bought the property, actually, when we bought the property, we were hoping to buy that piece because we were, we knew that our, we had found out after we bought it that our water was on there and our power. We didn't know when we bought it, which I wrote in the letter. Because of COVID and different situations, we weren't able to. And sadly, because this wouldn't even be going on if we were able to do what we wanted. Before they purchased it, my daughter told them twice that our water line and our power was on their property, trying to warn them as a good citizen would about the situation. And I'm thinking, maybe that's when all of this investigation should have been done before. And maybe they did, as they're saying. I also would like to say that they have not wanted to speak to us civilly. And when I yelled down there that our water line was off, they did go and turn it on, which I was very grateful for. And I had to yell up to my... And I had to yell up to my house and say, is it on? And they said, yes. There was no communication about glue or any of that sort of thing. You know, I'm very sorry that we couldn't have handled this situation civilly, like neighbors, like I would expect a neighbor to be. It started out well. I don't know how it all turned. I'm very sorry for that, for them. We're just, you got my statement, and I don't know if you have any other questions, but...
I do, Mrs. Athling. The, the only water line that you are aware of that services your property is the water line to your manufactured house, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it is potable water. You are billed by CPUD for potable water, for drinking water.
Yeah, I just learned about that term. I don't even, never heard of it.
Drinking water?
Yes. The way we found out is, it wasn't right away, I don't even remember the timing on it, but the water district called us and warned us that our meter was going crazy. And we went, they said, there has to be a broken line somewhere. And we went searching, and our neighbor Will, who lives on Treat Street that is adjoined there by us, or on the other property, he saw the water pouring out of that, that spigot that they're talking about that was on their property. And we talked to the water company, and we said, what can we do? You know, that's not our property. They said, you can, the only thing you can do is tap it off so no one uses your water. And we didn't do that because it wasn't our property, and we were hoping to buy it, and we didn't want to tap it off if we were going to use it. So that was how we found out that our water was there. So it just runs right through from our house through there and up to the meter. That's all we know. That's all we've ever known. And we've never had a problem with it going on or off until it got rerouted. There's been three different occasions that it's been shut off. And I don't believe an animal could go down there and turn that spigot. So I don't know who's doing it, but it's right there where anybody can reach it. And Kelsey did break that gate. There's grass growing all over it. It was late at night, dark, and she went down with the four-wheeler, and there's like about this much space, you know, you want to climb a fence and break it. You know, I'm not, I'm not capable of climbing a fence to turn my water on. We shouldn't have to be, you know, exposed to that. And maybe it's not their fault. Whoever's fault it is, it never was like that until the line got rerouted. So we just want, we just want the right thing to happen, whatever that is determined to be. And I just want to say I'm sorry for the, whatever is going on with them, and there's no communication at all. We tried to, and they just yell, you know, contact our lawyer, we don't want to talk to you. Oh, one other thing, my, my son-in-law worked for Gold Electric, he is an electrician, and he just wanted to start the process of communication, and he backed out because of the way he was being talked to. He let his people at Gold Electric call them, and they were going to come and check the pole, and they absolutely refused to deal with it because of the way they were talked to by the folks. So we had no recourse there, you know? So anyway, I just wanted to make that point. He is an electrician. He works for the water district now, so I can prove that if I ever had to. Anyway, thank you for letting me speak.
I have a quick question. I just want you to clarify, that when the manufactured home was placed on the property with permits, right Doug, that we have permits for that, you did not install the water and electrical line? They were already on your parcel?
We purchased it after that whole process...
Okay.
In 2000, I can't even remember the date, 13, 14, 15, whatever.
2012-ish?
Yeah, I just, my memory is really bad, unless I have it right in front. And we, our house was stripped because it was a foreclosure.
Okay.
So we didn't know much about anything. We did know that it had running water and power, so, you know, we didn't know to go find out where it ran, you know? I don't think you have to do that.
So when you moved in, or when you got possession...
When we moved in to the home.
It had the water connection there?
Of course, everything was fine. And we just, we didn't know where it was hooked up.
Okay.
And it wasn't disclosed to us?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak to this item?
I'm David Slade. I own the property where the water line, I'm not sure which number it is on your maps there.
Parcel 2, are you?
Parcel 2, come here.
That's me, parcel 2.
Thank you.
The water line on my property there has always been visible above ground. The valve that, that is there, the Applings had put there after they bought the property. At one time, I come up to their door because their water line was broken. The water line was above the ground, it's always been above the ground. And I told them, it's broken. He, he didn't immediately want to go turn it off. I said, well, where's the meter? I didn't know what the meter was. I eventually turned it off. So two-inch line, a lot of water coming out. There's other water lines that were put on at the same time as that water line that go all the way around my property, other than right up there. There used to be irrigation lines there. There used to be a water tank up on the hill, and they used to pump water out of the creek by what I can see by the water lines. A lot of those water lines are disconnected now. I've never seen it pumping the creek. At any rate, the, where the valve is on my property there, there's a metal stake coming up now too, to make it stronger or something. It's very dangerous, you could trip and tell yourself. Metal stake comes up about this high off the ground. The aggressiveness of the situation has always been caused by the Applings. I've been down, and they come screaming down on the, besides yelling from the top on their ATV. I feel for my safety while I'm there. I haven't gone to my property in years to do anything with it. I had fruit trees there, they all got hacked down. I believe it was Will's kids that hacked them down. With them, it was machete marks and stuff. They've used my property more than I have. It was, it was nice to finally get a gate up, even though it gets cut sometimes. At any rate, I don't even go down there anymore. I, you know, kids. The other day, I was down there with my 10-year-old son, we walk there, and the neighbor Will that she had mentioned, they've driven across the creek, and they were cutting firewood on my property. I asked him, why, why are you there? Oh, so-and-so told me it was okay. I didn't say they were. They made up some names. Oh, let me get you their card. They never provided that. Sheriff's came. I went down to that property that day because my, I have two riding lawnmowers there. And for the second time, it has ended up across the creek going towards Treat Store there. There's some homeless people sometimes that are down there. At any rate, that's why I was down there for, and then I heard the chainsaw, which went over onto the property. I was even on the property, foot my tractor. It eventually got stolen about a month later. It was the second time that it was taken. At any rate, the water line was always above the ground on my property.
Does anybody have any questions?
So your parcel 2...
Yeah.
...includes this public utility easement and goes all the way up to Pope Street? If I'm reading this right?
The 15-foot easement, yes.
That's the 15-foot?
That's the only easement on that property for that.
This is a separate parcel.
Oh, well, that's my question.
It's just this little piece along the, his north boundary.
And they don't have an access easement to that.
So your property does not go to Pope Street?
No.
Okay.
It doesn't go to Pope or Tree.
Well, I'm just curious about the private access easement, driveway easement. Where it crosses parcel 3, is that for the benefit of parcel 2 only?
Yes.
Do you know that?
It's for both parcels.
But there would be no reason for somebody on parcels 6, 5, and 4 to be crossing parcel 3?
Once you get to 2, you would have to cross a creek, which is what the neighbors...
You're the end of the road, basically, there.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, yes?
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak to this item? We're going to close the public comment portion of this hearing and return to staff to rebut
Well, a lot has been said here. Much of it, when we're going back to the basic premise of this case, work without permits, is outside really the scope of this case. There have been conversations with Cravelli. I do want to address the, the idea that he would be required to have a site plan, as I had said, that currently the building department does require it. It's not required in code. It is addressed in code, and it does give the building official the authority to waive construction documents if the work is simple, or it's something that we've seen and understand is as safe. I did give Mr. Cravelli the pass on requiring a site plan because both myself and Michael Clark, our supervising inspector, were on-site and saw that the location was consistent with the easements, so I did not feel that it was necessary to require it. I did identify to him, if he came in and got an over-the-counter permit, I would not require that site plan. So, in the, in the context of the Fish and Wildlife, there was a, a claim made in their discussion that Fish and Wildlife has opened some form of claim or case. I don't know the exact language they had used, but they mentioned Fish and Wildlife. I do have a email here that was sent to Mr. Cravelli in response to his questions to Fish and Wildlife from a Mr. Zachary Kearns, who is a biologist in Fish and Wildlife. He was contacted by Mr. Cravelli regarding the legality of the placement. He was, was confused, so he contacted me. He, we discussed the information that Mr. Cravelli gave him, specifically the site plan that you have as part of the packet. He identified that because of the, the scope of the work that would be done within the area where Fish and Wildlife has authority, he wasn't certain if they would require a permit or not. He did identify, however, to me on the phone that it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be not allowed, they would simply have to notify Fish and Wildlife that they would be doing work to relocate or, or install plumbing, and that if the notification is required, there would be a fee for that. The email that is specifically addressed that I can provide to your board, it just identifies that upon resolution of your appeal with the county, I will be able to help you with determining if your next steps involve needing to comply with Fish and Game Code. If we determine that the next steps will require a notification under Fish and Game Code 1600, I will be happy to help you with that process as well. So ultimately, if, he had expressed his desire to get a permit, going back to the original discussion over do I need a permit for a water line? Now, I do not have record of an email saying, do I need permit for a water line? But the response from Ms. Delbar back then was, you do not need a permit for a water line for irrigation specifically. That conversation was directly related to him wanting to put in his own water line. So I, I concur with his statement, he wanted to put in a water line for his parcel, and that was the information we gave him. This is not a water line for his parcel, it was a water line for his neighbor's parcel. That being said, going back to the beginning of this, the moment he relocated it, he would have been required to get a building permit from us. We did give him the deference and say, you know, we're going to start over the case when he appealed the first time, because we did make an error. We did start the entire case over, gave him an entire new process, starting with the notice of violation with no penalties. We did indeed meet him on-site. We did give deference to what construction documents were required, and that would be none. And he is at any time free to come into our office, pay for an over-the-counter permit, and notify Fish and Wildlife that he's going to be doing that work. And we would make sure that if there was an exemption, we just have record of it, he could hand that to us, or Fish and Wildlife can contact us directly. If he's required to notify them, then we would make sure that he follows their process before we sign it off. But this is a very simple process, it is a very short process, and at any time he wishes to apply for that permit, we are happy to grant that permit to him. That's all I have for you.
I have a question. As I understand it, Captain Cravelli says that this, this easement, even though on the parcel map it says it's a public utility easement, it isn't an appropriate place for a CPUD water line, if I understand his contentions correctly? Is it?
By virtue of it being recorded on a map, that it is a public utility easement, it is entirely appropriate for a public utility to be placed there, and any lines that are, that are conveying that utility to the parcel.
Including a public utility that's providing domestic water?
Yes, this is a common installation practice throughout the county.
Hey, also, excuse me, I'd just like to add that I was present when Mr. Oliver was speaking, double-checking this with the county surveyor, Robert Pakenger, as well.
So, I think I've already heard this answer, but I just want to make sure that the option was available to the appellant at the time that the water line, or even if you believed it was an irrigation line, was broken. They could have repaired it on the spot and then pursued the relocation of those lines with their neighbor, but that would, that would be a legal issue outside the purview of county staff. Is that correct?
Correct.
Sarah?
I'm sorry.
Yes, I mean, that would be a civil matter between neighbors, to the extent they believe there was a trespass, or that those lines shouldn't be on their property.
What of the, the argument, as I understand it from Captain Cravelli and Mrs. Cravelli, that if this is an unpermitted line, it can't be treated as a domestic water line, potable water, it has to be treated as irrigation? You could restate that if...
I understand your thing, sir.
I was just clarifying that that's what their contention was.
But I'm stating their contention correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the application of the uniform codes, or the, in California codes in this case, we identify it for what it most closely resembles, not, not the legality of whether it was placed or not. So often, there's structures that are built without permits, and we discover them. We don't say that they're immediately not a structure, they're something else, that we classify it based on its use and what it was intended for, and then we work towards compliance at that point. So anything that's out there in the world right now that we don't know exists, that we come across, that's the first step, is, okay, what does this appear to be? And then next, now that it's modified, is that, does it require a permit? Now, we also have grounds in, in California Health and Safety Code where it does specify under substandard housing definition, that plumbing is a violation if it's not working properly, not whether or not it has a permit or not, it's simply whether it was installed with a permit or not. If it's functioning as it was intended, it is not a violation. So there's deference in state law to identify that just because it wasn't permitted doesn't necessarily mean it is un... necessarily mean it is unsafe or illegal.
I would add to that, that the language of the codes that are alleged to be violated, if they wanted people working on plumbing lines to check the ownership data, I think that they could have stated that in the regulations and didn't. I don't believe that the intention was that anytime somebody needs plumbing work done in their house, they have to trace their line all the way to the meter. I think that the purpose is the health and safety of the actual work being done, and that we can fairly separate the issue of whether or not work was done on a pipe without having to resolve the civil property rights issues between the parties.
And also, following on that, then it would be the code enforcement's claim that all we're concerned with right now is the break that happened in this line and the replacement line that was put in to restore service to water supply to the neighbor's house, that any questions as to surface valves somewhere else in that line, or whether that line is on the surface somewhere else, that's not an issue before us now? It's something that code compliance might look into later, or...
The only issue before your board right now is, is a permit required. And because it was relocated, a new water line was put in, a permit is required, and then from there, when a permit is issued, they're required to follow the plumbing code, which will address all the other concerns.
But the other concerns that the Cravellis might have on their property, separate from this particular issue, is something for another day. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And just to clarify even more specifically, what's at issue in front of the planning, the planning commission sitting is the AHB today, is whether or not the citation should be upheld, which, as Mr. Oliver said, the citation was for doing the work without a permit. But yes, it's the narrow issue of the citation.
And is the option still available to them to repair the broken line in place and restore water flowing through the original line, and then pursue a solution with their attorney and their neighbors? Or would the...
I don't know...
Could they remove all of the unpermitted work that they did?
I don't know the extent of the removal of the existing pipe, but our rule of thumb is that if you've removed or replaced over six feet of pipe or more than two fittings, we would require an over-the-counter permit. Otherwise, we're considering clearing stoppages and breaks.
So if they came in to get an over-the-counter permit to, let's assume that five feet of pipe is broken, and they're going to have two fittings, of course, one on either end. So they would not be required to provide proof of or create an easement at that time, would they?
That's correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to make that clear. Is there, are there other questions before we give the appellant an opportunity to speak again?
I wonder if the Appelis have anything to add, and then give the appellant the chance to add.
Ms. Appley, is there anything that you would like to add? Or are there any questions for Ms. Appley?
I think, oh, yeah, gee, but... They were always willing to work with them in getting the situation solved.
You need to come up to the microphone, please.
We've always been willing to work with them to resolve the issue, but we're never able to communicate with them because of the hostile environment. So we're always willing to, you know, do whatever's right, and do our share of getting it put the way it should be, or whatever. You know, we just couldn't do anything after they did what they did, because they didn't want us on their property, they didn't want to talk to us. We couldn't, you know, once that was done, then there wasn't much we could do. But we are totally willing to do whatever it takes to resolve this issue civilly.
I just want to add, in the course of conversation on-site, that I did approach the Appelis when we were discussing the work that would be done on their parcel to place that water line in the ground. I asked on behalf of the Cravellis, would you allow them to be on the property line here, put this in the ground, because they will be working on your property? And they did say, yes, they would allow that. Are you still allowing access to make that repair and put that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I did want to add one piece. When the tractor was doing its work, my daughter, you know, was looking to see what was going on, and she did see that Mr. Cravelli was putting the pipe in while the tractor was still working, you know, if that has any bearing on it, you know, like he knew what his plan was, you know, while the tractor was still running, I think. I mean, I believe so.
Is your daughter here, Ms. Appley?
Yeah, she is.
Could you ask her to confirm or deny what you said? Thank you.
And actually, I was doing a lice treatment on a kid when this happened. I had to go to the pool to wash the kid's hair out, and that's why I was a little upset, because the water just went off. We weren't informed. They won't talk to us. Anytime I try to talk to them, they say, "You're trespassing, you're trespassing, you're trespassing!", and film me and call the cops. That's our communication. And I've gone down there like, "Can we just talk? We need to figure this out. We don't have water." Nothing. There's no communication. At that point, I called the water department, and I said, "We have no water." And they said, "We'll send someone down there to see." And they sent someone down and said, "The meter wasn't running," so they left it on, and they didn't know what was going on. My mom called later when she got off work, and they said that he called and said he broke the line, and that's why our water went off, for a couple hours during the day.
What's your name, ma'am?
My name's Kelsey Galloway.
Are you the daughter of Ms. Appley?
Yes.
Marilyn Appley?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I have one for Mr. Oliver.
You can sit down. Thank you.
Would it be a contractor that's doing the work on our replacing that pipe? I mean, given that it's not been done right thus far, my husband is saying, shouldn't it be a contractor that does the work, so we assure the fact that it's getting done right? Just a thought.
In general, any work over $500 is required to be performed by a licensed contractor. And in the case of strictly plumbing, it would be a C-36. It should be plumbing contractor.
Okay. Commissioner Wooster.
Yeah, I do have a question. Following up on Ms. Platnik's question about whether they could just repair the old pipe, they got broken or not, without a permit. But to do, they also have this new piping system in place. And as I read Section 105.1 of the Building Code, if they go to remove, convert, or replace it, that would require a permit too, wouldn't it?
Normally, we would consider the entire project as the scope of one permit, rather than issue multiple permits. So it wouldn't cost anything extra. It would still be the same one inspection. So yes, it would be all encompassing.
But that would assume that they would need a permit to repair the original pipe. And if it's less than five feet or whatever, they could just repair it, couldn't they?
I'm prepared to waive that permit requirement if it goes that direction. But once again, I don't know the scope of the removal of the existing pipe. If too much has been removed, it would still end up being a building permit to replace it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Would the appellant like to speak again? You have 10 minutes to rebut any...
How much time?
10 minutes.
Wonderful. Yes, please. Thank you.
And there may be additional questions after that, but you'll have 10 minutes to speak.
The first thing I'd like to do is address this issue that we're not available to talk or whatever. What I'd like to do is give you, submit a package of pictures showing these people repeatedly coming down on our property in a very hostile manner, when we advised them through the sheriff that clearly there's a disagreement here, there's a problem. So they don't own the property. They're renters. Their son owns the property. So we need to talk to him, and that's why we said, "Please call our lawyer," so there's no miscommunication problems, which seems to be a predominant theme here. That's why we put everything in writing. As far as my correspondence with Monica Delbar, clearly, I'm asking about permits and site map plans for a water supply to our property. I'm not talking about an irrigation line. They're the ones that brought up irrigation line, and either that's because of miscommunication, or that they determined through our May 11 complaint, which the council acknowledges it's in her staff report about the CPUD water, that since they never responded to that, and never told us the determination of the pipe sitting above ground, which Mr. Slade was kind enough to have the courage to come here and tell what's really going on, that this pipe has been in violation of Health and Safety Code for years, years before we got the property. And that's why the valve above the ground and the pipe above the ground is a Health and Safety Code violation. It's because it's putting us in danger with this confusion about trespassing, and who has access to the private access easement. Private access easement basically ends when your property line is, and you don't have a domain, a right to use that private access onto the next property unless you own the property on the other side. So to answer your question, I believe, Mr. Lattish, is that where does the private access end? For their parcel number four, it ends at our joint property line number three. That's the way that access works. And there's this continued talk about a public utility easement. It's not a bona fide utility easement, as Mr. Oliver refers to. The other question here is, is that there's this discussion about the permit, and he even says in an email back and forth with me, and I remember the date is the 7th, but it's in the package there, that he says, "This line is unpermitted. Once we get a permit for it, there will be a permit on file for it." So he's acknowledging that this critical precondition for this line being legal across our property, and being legal period to serve a home, is missing. When the house was installed, it was not installed with permits. There is an inspection report on record, but it's not even completed. If you look on the bottom of that inspection record, the most critical thing here, what we're talking about, is final plumbing. That would mean that the line was fully inspected, pressure-tested, which is something that he mentions would be a requirement for me in getting the permit signed off. All of that stuff is missing. So you can't just assume that this line is legal and it's allowed to be there. It's not allowed to be there. But the most important thing is, is I never refused to repair this. That's my line on top of the property that was, that happened to be there. She said she saw me working on it. I wasn't. I was directing the excavator. I was directing the excavator the whole time until the water line was broken. Then I thought, okay, what's the fastest way to repair this? Because we can't repair it as it is, because you still have to remove a six-foot diameter stump that was right where the speaker was. So it's going to get broken again. We don't know where this line is, and that's the question that we have here about doing work on their property. Again, they said, Mr. Oliver's saying, "It's fine to do the work there." We can't do any work. No contractor will come to that job site on our behalf that we trust to do the job right, because there's no site map plan. They don't know if they're going to hit a sewer line. They don't know if they're going to hit a gas line. They don't know if they're going to hit an electric line. They don't know if they're going to hit an additional water line and create another burdensome situation. That's why the site map plan is a critical requirement of any new feature to a property. I offered to repair the line the day that, the day it was hit. The building department, we were waiting for them to come out. We were waiting for someone to come out and look at this thing, so that we could proceed. Nobody ever did. And if you look at the timeframes on these things, how long there is between each communication. Monica Delbar, we went in on the 15th, or, yeah, the 15th, when Reba Davis came out to the property to inspect the line. I said, "Look, let's deal with this." I'm the one that said that. She just said, "We're going to cite you. We're here to cite you." Not to give you a verbal warning, a verbal warning, like it says they're required to do in their PDF, the one with, I have the reference, which you people have in my evidence packet, about looking the other way. And that's why I would like you people to submit these. I'd like these to be looked at, because there's, this is one picture right here, and this is important, because we are on David's property. That's why we go when we come to our property. We don't enter from our easement. We go all the way over onto David's, on the neighboring property, so that these people cannot yell and scream at us and say they want to talk to us and talk about this stuff. We wanted to settle this, but clearly, they're saying we need lawyers. This is a legal issue. It's not for county code enforcement. Health and safety isn't a county issue, and we disagree on that. But we were willing to repair the line and have another department take this up. In fact, at this point, there are several departments that are interested in looking at this, and why this has gone on for a year. We didn't ask for them to keep kicking the can down the street. They issued an NOV. We said we'd fix it, but Doug Oliver denied me a permit that day. He denied me a permit. He said, "No, I won't give you a permit." The original reason why, he said, this is because, when I was talking to Monica Delbar, he said, "I'm not going to give you a permit, because that line's already there." And we're like, "What are you talking about? You can't deny us a permit to develop our property, because someone else's illegal line is in the way." But on the 15th, when I went in there, into the office, and met with him and Sabrina Cable and Reba Davis, I said, "I want a permit right now to fix it," and he said, "No." He said, "No, I need to talk to the lawyer first." Why is that? Why is the lawyer so entrenched in this activity here today? And again, she's answering questions to you people. She did that earlier. That is a conflict of interest. That is in violation of transactional disqualification. And that's why we're so concerned about what's going on here. This really isn't fair. But again, I would like to submit these photos, because they're talking, saying that we're not amenable to talking about this. And another very important picture here is this one. If you can see the water line going down the shared fence of the property, and Reba Davis walked right by it. All the code violation that's there, that's looking the other way. And it's very disturbing how this house has been able to sit in defiance of code ordinance for 10 years.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's been a lot of public outcry about this property. A lot of it in the code violations that have been filed over the years, and they've been ignored. And this brings up another thing about hiding evidence and false testimony and inaccurate testimony here about what's going on. We requested, and we had to do a PRA, a Public Records Request Act, because they don't voluntarily, they refuse to give us documents for our safety, word of public, public health and safety. Again, we've been asking for documents since we got the property. These are not nice people. We don't look at that as nice people coming down to talk to us. These are people coming down screaming like banshees at us. And it's disappointing. We want to have nice neighbors. We want to get along with people. We don't come up here for conflict. We live in the Bay Area. That's plenty of conflict down there. That's why we came up here. But this mischaracterization that we're the hostile ones is just inaccurate, and it's false. We offered, when we first met them, when we first met them, we put the gravel in on the driveway. That's on their property. That's their responsibility. But we said, "We'll take care of it, because we benefit from it." We need that to get in and out of our property. That's when she advised us, is that, "Our utilities are on your property. We need to work something out." And we said, "Sure, we'll talk about it." Well, they never did. They just kept coming on our property, using this water valve and their electric meter as an excuse. And we said, "We can't have that." She was running an illegal daycare center. There were children all over our property, putting them in danger, jumping around on this big tree. That's why we cut up the tree instantly to remove it, because it is a public nuisance. It's dangerous. That's what we do. We solve problems. We don't create problems, we solve them. That's why I tried to fix this line. Mr. Oliver denied me that permit. He denied it to me. And I've never been offered just a regular over-the-counter water line repair permit. I have not been offered that. The only permit I've been offered is a permit for as-built. And that's falsifying the public record, because it wouldn't be as-built to do the repair. They said, "You can repair it as-is." That's not what's going on here. I didn't choose this location... I didn't choose this location of the pipe. That's not a public utility easement for him to decide what can and can't be there. And in fact, that brings up an important point here, is I actually, on the advice of council, we went in and terminated that public utility easement. It does not exist anymore because it does create so much confusion. And I have these documents here. Let's pull them up here.
Sir, your time is up, but if you will just remain at the podium for one moment. Does anybody have any further questions? Captain Cravelli? Nobody?
Yeah, yeah.
What is it that you would like to show us?
I would like to give you for the record, the easement termination document. That's something that you have to do the right thing. You have to go into the county reporter's office.
Do you have copies for us?
I do. I have to find them. That's part of the problem here.
So why don't you sit down, go ahead and find that document, and then we'll, you can provide the copies and we will take a look at that.
Yeah, the other thing is, is our contractor was finally able to get here. And I think he could shed a little bit of light on this as well, is what happened at our onsite meeting and the directives that were given to us and whatnot. I think it would be reasonable to have him speak. He came all the way from Walnut Creek. And it's important. He's got 40 years' experience. We've done a lot of work together. And that's why we have a relationship, because we don't cut corners. We're by the book. We do everything legally. And I think it's important for him to be heard.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll reopen the comment period for up to five minutes. Would you like to come and speak, sir?
Does he need to be sworn in?
Yes, he does.
My name is Wayne Mike.
Oh, sir, sorry. After I read the oath, he will need you to raise your right hand. And after I read the oath, he'll say, I do or I know. Do you solemnly state under penalty of perjury that the evidence that you shall give in this issue or matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and none but the truth?
I will. Yeah, I'm a general contractor, been there 45 years. I'm Steve's house. And I showed up to his property to see his water line is, it was above ground. And it went from the meter through the creek up through the driveway to the neighbor's house. And Steve found out it was an illegal line, so he wanted to take care of it. Remember, the building inspector out there, and he said, well, he won't give Steve a permit. Let me pull a permit for a water line. It's supposed to be irrigation line, but they're using it for the whole house. So that was in the middle of this whole celebration, how to solve the problem and do the line in a legal place, you know? And but the inspector said he wanted it so deep and this and that, so sent some drawings, some email, Steve, myself, and we never received the drawings. So I was here to help Steve out.
So you were there to take a look at rectifying the above-ground installation and putting it underground? And you met with the building inspector and weren't able to resolve it on the spot that day?
He sort of explained what he wanted to do, you know, in person, but he's going to make a little drawing for what he wanted and sent his email, you know, he can just give the gravel and all sorts of stuff. And then he receives any kind of drawing or anything. And Steve found out that the water line goes through the creek and stuff, but never is a real dedicated water line. Someone did some bad work, I would say. So that's about what I have to say up to here.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Nope.
Nope. Thank you. Close the public comment portion of the hearing again. Okay, hearing board members. Are there any follow-up questions for anybody?
I just have one thing I need clarified. So the neighbor was stating that there's existing lines that have been there all along. They're above ground. The diagonal line was not one of those, right? It was?
No, that was underground. The apartment is above ground.
Sorry, just so that we can hear. Thank you.
Yeah, it's important. Across our property, what was visible was a spigot in the middle of that diagonal on that map that color-coded one. So that's all we really knew about. There was a massive oak tree laying on its side. I don't know if you can, if I included those pictures, there should be some to see the size of what was cut up on the ground. And what happened was is it wasn't buried there. We couldn't see it because it wasn't under the tree. That's why there is a sun-faded pipe that they referred to that needed to be replaced. That was a section of, from the top point where our fence line is, between parcel three and four, where it comes. There's a section of pipe there. That was the stuff that was already existing. And that's why it was sun-bleached and faded because it was above ground. We just couldn't see it because of the oak tree that was laying on top of it. So it's obvious that that was prior to us getting the property. The line was not completely buried across our property, I think is what you're looking for. Is that your question?
Well, what my question, this is your drawing that you submitted?
Correct.
Okay. You rerouted it from here along this easement?
That's just a bypass. Like I said, yes, yes.
But that's what you did, right? So you reran the line along this where the red is?
Yes.
And that's all above ground?
My pipe was already there, preassembled on top of the ground.
I understand.
Because that was there, we were going to remove the tree and then start doing our stuff. And so that's why it was ready to go. And that's why it was just, it was made sense that, okay, I can quickly hook these together. What I did was the pipe that we had on the shared border, since it was short, I wasn't going to run my water line for that side of our fence all the way up to that point. I had it there. I took the broken piece that the excavator picked up when he was picking up one of the rounds from the oak tree. I used that. I had a reducer. We have different sized pipes, one inch and a quarter, which all the plumbers specked out. There's this inch and a half. That's irrelevant. But I just dropped it over the fence at that point. And yes, I did use that to bypass it because he told me, he said, the whole thing, if it's all subsurface like that, six or eight inches, or on the surface, it's all going to get torn up anyways. So the best thing to do so that we don't have a big swamp and it's dangerous for him with his excavator was to reroute it, to temporarily bypass it. The original pipe is all still in its diagonal across our property, except for the section that I'm referring to.
Okay. But so you ran a new line alongside of the line you were, so where were you going to run your line through?
Our line would go perpendicular, actually, if you go straight out to Pope Street.
Okay.
Basically, if you turn your map towards me, okay, and where my property line, move your finger to the right. Okay, right there. If you go straight out to Pope Street on the edge of the crosshatched area, you're in the wrong area of service. Go up to Pope Street, which would be the town.
Right here.
Correct. That's where our meter was going to be. So we have pipe in place over there. And it was going to run down the page to the bottom.
I understand.
And intercept ours. And then it was going to go around one side of the property. And then the spigot was going to rotate 45 degrees over to the other way.
Okay.
So if you put your finger in the middle of the diagonal, right there, and rotate that over to the side, that's where we were going to reroute what was there. And then our other pipe was going to go out to Pope Street for the meter and then tie into that big section of pipe I had there. That's why it was there. That's several hundred feet of pipe. It's over $500 in material. I didn't buy it anticipating that I was going to hit their line and have to use that. I've lost a lot of money on this. This pipe's been sitting above ground, 300 feet I've lost because it sat here for a year. This is just going on and on and on. If this is a big public safety issue, we should have dealt with this. Should have come to terms on this much faster. And I'm glad that Bill's here to talk about our meeting because it was very clear. We said, look, you really need to put in writing exactly what you're asking us. Because the NOV that they issued, they asked for, say that we have to obtain an easement. Okay? But they're saying that the easements are there okay. And that's why we said that our attorney asked them, please clarify, obtain an easement from whom and for whom and a permit for what specifically? And those three questions, just those simple three questions, were never directly answered. And that's why this went on and on and on. Because, you know, you're asking us to give up our property for these people for a line that they know is non-compliant to begin with because it was sitting above ground. And they looked at that. We pointed that out to them at the meeting. We said, here's the valve. Mr. Slade has acknowledged that the appellants put that in. Mr. Bill saw it, Bill Hite, our contractor. So, you know, there's a problem here.
Has your question?
Yeah, you've answered my question. I appreciate that.
I'm sorry. I hope so. I hope so.
I got it.
I have a question for the county.
You can take your seat.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have you seen this termination of easement?
Yeah.
No.
Do you need to see the copy?
Yeah.
Is my question, is what effect does that have, if any?
So are there going to be any further questions or can I close this portion of the public hearing and then we can discuss this item?
That's my question to them, to the county.
Yes, but not to the appellant.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Then we're closing the public hearing portion. We'll be deliberating.
Okay, to answer your question, I hadn't seen this. I will say that I'm guessing county council or other attorneys civilly will have to address this because in my understanding, an individual can't terminate an easement without the permission of the people who have access to the easement, in which case is every utility company that would possibly need access to that easement. Now, that's just my experience over the last 22 years, but this is not related, no way relates to this case and could also identify that, well, I'm not even going to get into, I'm not an attorney, but it doesn't.
And I have not seen it. I'm happy to review it.
I was going to say, can you take a look? My reading of it is that they have relinquished their rights to the use of the easement, but you can't single-handedly terminate an easement that other people have access to without going through a process of rerecording the map, having all the utility companies sign off on it and the county surveyor.
Yes. In general, an individual property owner would not, could not terminate a recorded public easement unilaterally.
Can I make one brief comment regarding the relevance of that document? I just wanted to also refocus the commission on the fact that, you know, we, I understand that there was earlier, and this is a violation that went out. There's no fines accruing on the earlier ones that were rescinded. We're only looking at the one from where we started, where we started over. And basically, if Mr. Cravelli and Ms. Fitzgerald have thought of a better place or a better way to fix this, Mr. Oliver is perfectly happy to hear it. We are not demanding that they choose one route or another so long as they find a way that will legally meet the requirements of the plumbing code and the building code.
Hearing board members.
Well, my take on this is fairly simple. The appellants broke the water line that crossed their property and supplied CPUD water to their neighbors, which was being used for domestic use. They didn't fix the water line, could have done so without a permit. They did reroute the line and restore water to their neighbors quickly. But there was no permit for that. They received a notice of violation and they didn't remedy the violation, still haven't. I don't think it matters for purposes here whether the water line they broke was quote "legal" or not. It was being used as a domestic water line. As the code compliance brief points out, there may have been an easement by necessity held by the appellants. We don't need to decide that, but it may have been legal without a grant D. So my take on it is that the order should be upheld.
I concur with Commissioner Wooster and his reasoning.
I have to concur. I've been trying to see both sides here and I just don't see any way around it, unfortunately.
I concur. I think that unfortunately, there's a very complicated and confusing situation here. And I'm quite sure that the appellants are very, very frustrated. However, the issue before us today is very simple. And there was an option for a much simpler resolution to this, although it will drag on for the other parties for quite a long time, I'm sure, to resolve this in a way that makes everybody happy. But that is not anything that we can be involved with today. So I concur. I would uphold the notice. And we should take a look at the resolution.
I recommend we take a break so we have a chance to review the resolution.
Sure. So is 10 minutes enough? No, I'm sorry. We'll take a 10-minute break. Thank you. Mr. Wooster?
Yes, I have some suggestions. On page one, the fifth whereas clause reads, whereas Stephen Cravelli and Alana Fitzgerald, without obtaining a permit from the Calaveras County Building Department, repaired the leak and rerouted the water line, et cetera. I don't think the phrase repaired the leak belongs in there. They didn't. And just as a matter of typing, at the bottom, it says page one of three. There's four pages. It should say page one of four. On page two of four, the first whereas clause at the top starts, whereas on January 1, 2022, Stephen Cravelli and Alana Fitzgerald were issued a notice of violation. And it goes on. January 1 should be January 21. On the third whereas clause, it reads, whereas on March 24, 2022, Stephen Cravelli and Alana Fitzgerald were issued an order to abate administrative citation and fine, at which point a fine of $100 per day begins to accrue, et cetera. Begin should be began. On page three of four, the paragraph at the top that starts, be it therefore resolved that the HB recommends the Board of Supervisors to uphold the order to abate, et cetera, that "to" should come out. And going along there where it goes around, says, "to authorize the county to commence abatement." The "to" should be deleted. And "to authorize the cost of the abatement," et cetera. That "to" should be deleted. Numbered paragraph two on page three, four lines down, where it talks about the water line on parcel 029, they unilaterally repaired and rerouted. I would strike the words repaired and. And the full paragraph of evidence, about halfway down, there's a sentence that begins, "The record evidence and testimony provided for this hearing clearly proves that the water line broken and rerouted by appellants was and is a plumbing system within the meaning of the building and plumbing codes." Needs to be an end quote after the word "system" in the phrase plumbing system. Down four lines from the bottom of that page, there's a sentence that reads, "It is uncontested that this work resulted in the water line being placed above ground and never reburied." Should be buried, not reburied.
On page three, the be it therefore resolved paragraph, I do believe there should be a comma at the last line of that paragraph after the name Fitzgerald. And then in paragraph two, uh, fourth line down, we're talking about after a worker and their employee severed a water line. I'd suggest we say, uh, potable water line. And that's what I have. And I commend Commissioner Wooster.
Yes.
Yeah. I agree with all of those items. Okay. If there's no further discussion, let's hear the recommendation. I forgot this part. I've never been on this side and I don't know that Mr. Oliver has either. Um, I see, um, Code Compliance Division recommends that the Board of Supervisors uphold the order to abate administrative citation and fine issued in Code Compliance Case Number CE210063 and that the cost of the abatement be specifically assessed, specially assessed against parcel APN 042-028-029, owned by Stephen Cravelli and Alana Fitzgerald.
As amended?
As amended.
Still moved.
One second.
So we have a motion and a second by hearing board members, Wooster and Lattish.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, with one hearing board member positioned vacant. So unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, if I may, Madam Chair, um, so pursuant to County Code Section 8.06.600H, um, this, as the resolution reflected, the administrative hearing board's decision is a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Um, that recommendation will be submitted by the building official to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors within 14 days of today. And it will then be placed on a Board of Supervisors' agenda at a regularly scheduled board meeting. Um, notice of that board meeting will be mailed to the Appellant, um, at least 10 days before the board meeting. And the Board of Supervisors will either adopt the recommendation of the AHB without hearing or at its discretion can conduct a de novo hearing.
Thank you. Then we will.
Can I ask the Planning Department, Planning Department I think has some documents that they could distribute now to the commissioners before they adjourned?
Yes, but let me close.
Yes, certainly.
The hearing board hearing. And then, um, there she is. She has magically appeared.
She just can't get in.
So we are reconvening the Planning Commission at 11:25 so that Gina can distribute something to us and then we are going to take a break. Bless you, whoever that was.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
I've, I've seen it.
And then, how much time would everybody like for a break before we start on the greenhouse gas? Is a half an hour enough? Do you need 45 minutes?
Do, do we want a break for lunch and then reconvene in maybe an hour?
Yeah.
Or do you wanna?
I, I think you should all eat faster than that.
45 minutes?
Yes, okay. So can we live with 45 minutes?
We'll try.
Okay. So we'll see everybody back here at 10 minutes after noon. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We are reconvened, but now I'm looking for, so your latest.
So I think what we have left to go through is agriculture, um, I suppose wildfire and water and wastewater. So what we've already gone through is solid waste, energy and transportation. In respect to solid waste, it doesn't look like I have anything specifically Xed out. I do have some comments, um, but they were not anything that indicated that they were absolute no-gos, don't want those on the list. Looking through energy, um, I have a no by EB3, low-income programs.
EB3.
EB3 under energy.
Well, I don't think we want that, see, that's what I'm thinking. I don't think that's a no-go to promote and support low-income weatherization programs. They're being paid for and run by somebody else. We shouldn't be X-ing that out.
What about the last sentence?
Offer a housing rehabilitation loan program. So that I could think that a piece of it should.
And I, and I, I fudge on that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So if there is state or federal money available to create a housing rehabilitation loan program, I don't think we should preclude it, but I don't think we want to say we're absolutely going to do it.
What I suggest, and that's, this latest thing I've unloaded on you, is that we replace that sentence with pursue grants to fund a housing rehabilitation loan program for weatherization, because I think this is all doing, has to do with weatherization.
Well, I think a housing rehabilitation loan program might be bigger than weatherization, which are.
I agree, but the, the, okay.
We do have one in place. I just wanted to remind the commission that there is a CDBG, um, home rehabilitation loan program already in place. It just, um, I don't believe it covers mobile homes anymore.
In that case, well, it's an established provision and would not underen the calculations for a reduction, right?
Yeah, but we should not worry about that and let them worry about that. I think that was pretty clear. If we worry about how they're going to calculate it, we're gonna get ourselves snagged up. It's just.
It is grant-based, so I mean, the concept of continuing to pursue or pursuing grants does tell with what they already have to do. They have to get federal grants for that.
Okay.
Yes, and so if there's the opportunity to expand it and it seems reasonable, we should be doing it. I just think the offer sounds
so.
So absolute.
Pursue grants to fund, okay?
Okay, yeah. Pursue grants to fund.
Yeah.
Housing rehabilitation.
To fund or to expand or whatever we want to say.
Well, that raises a more general question because this is gonna come up more often.
Yep.
Because much of the concern here on the part of some of us, or at least one of us, is this all costs money. One alternative that's been suggested is, well, say you'll do it when you get the grant money, but that doesn't really count unless you commit yourself to try and get the grant money. That raises the question of who's gonna pay for the person to go after the grant money?
You're on my topic again. I'm gonna, you know, you guys are sick of me saying that we have to budget for a person with somebody in charge.
I guess that's where you guys need to, you know, get involved and, and start talking in the ear of your supervisors because they're the ones that are gonna make the decision to add staffing for that reason.
Because virtually none of this can happen if we don't have additional funding. So it really requires somebody to go get those.
Well, and that seems to be the consensus across the board from those agencies that have contacted us. Um, just so, just so you guys know, as of the last meeting, um, there was obviously a great concern from all of you as to whether or not, um, other departments that would end up being, you know, either responsible for or somehow affected by these measures, um, just how, you know, they, what their take on all of this was and whether or not they could, they could support any of those. So we did, um, we did start, um, reaching out to everyone, um, including, you know, slightly beyond the, um, the county government departments. And, um, so, you know, it's, it's been gradual. Um, we have gotten a little feedback. Um, nothing that's really in the form of anything hardcore that I would want to pass on to you, but there does seem to be a general consensus so far from the comments that I have received is that we don't have the funding, we don't have the staffing. So if, you know, the board can figure out how to, how to resolve that issue, then maybe more of this seems to be a little more reasonable.
I think it's gonna have to be grants. I mean, again.
I think it has to be grants, but I think we have to have someone whose job it is to go look for grants. I think that could be the same person. I think that we need to make sure that our whole general plan gets implemented and prioritized. And it's also related to the whole housing element thing. We've been saying for decades, possibly. I've been around a long time, that we need a housing coordinator whose job is actually to go out there and pursue projects and funding. If we're gonna say we're gonna do these things. So it seems like we're right back to that same thing here. Like, all of these things might, with the exception of a few that we might philosophically just be opposed to or feel like they're not a good fit for us, that all of them come down to how can we actually get it done?
Yeah.
And if we had that person, they could also help look at each of these items and say, okay, there's, maybe there's a more creative way to actually do this when we look at the steps to accomplishing it and what kind of money would be most helpful and what is most beneficial in our county versus what, you know, Santa Cruz is doing. So, so maybe our very first overarching item should be appoint and fund a position, create and fund a position.
A grant-seeking position, namely.
Yes, that will, will help implement all of our programs and seek the money for them. And hopefully, they would actually be able to pay for themselves over time.
Yeah. Yeah. In my personal experience, when I was in the Attorney General's office, I was, I was in charge of a section that actually saved the state millions of dollars, but to convince the controller that we needed another position to save the state more millions of dollars, well, that would cost $100,000. It's, it's a hard, it's a hard thing to do in government.
We pay a lobbyist, you know, and that reason is that they actually hopefully pay for themselves. So. But, but I think the other side of it is, the more we can take on here locally and maybe control our own destiny to some amount, the less likely we're just gonna be imposed upon by higher-ups telling us what we're going to do.
Exactly.
So that.
Now, I, I'd, before we get into the individual entries, I'd like to give you the gist of what I've, the first couple of pages of what I've.
Before we get too far gone, um, so, so what's the general consensus over EB3? Are we keeping it just with some modified language indicating that we'll pursue grants? Okay.
For me, is everybody okay with that?
Kelly?
Reluctantly.
Yes, 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 maybe?
Okay, so.
Okay.
It took me, maybe I'm more dense than I usually am. Took me a long time to figure out how there were so many non-mandated actions in here stated, after they, the consultants clearly indicated in footnote three that you actually have mandated actions in order to, uh, enter into the reduction calculation. And it was the answer of the Rencon consultant concerning the transportation, that if everybody looks at, I don't know the page number, but look at TR1. I think they have come across a very clear way of approaching this. Under category, which I would have that problem on the left-hand side renamed mandated actions, they state a very clear, uh, goal with a clear percentage, uh, required to meet the goal and, and the date over there in that left-hand column. And then, as you explained to us last time, a lot of the, the strategies, TR 1.1 through 1.10, are substantial evidence supporting the fact, if we do these things, we're really trying to reach the goal. Now, unfortunately, most of the segments aren't in that, uh, form. So I'm, I'm recommending, after a discussion of this, uh, let's see, let me see. On page two of what I provided you, I recommend that the category column be renamed as the mandated action column. That each action in that column be stated as a mandate and that each mandated action contain a clear numeric amount, such as a percentage increase or reduction, that can lead to calculation of GHD reduction. I don't think most of this form really follows that. The other consultants have sometimes just put a subject matter in that left-hand column and then under strategy name, they've, they've given a sometimes very general goal, but nothing that could form a basis for the calculation of GHD reduction. So I, I would like the Planning Commission to recommend to the consultants that they adopt the form that TR1 and its supporting strategies have taken. I'm not saying everything in that supporting strategy is good or whatever. We can discuss that later. But the form itself, I think, will actually provide a basis where we can, or the consultants can calculate what the GHD reduction would be in that area.
I don't think in, well, I understand that. I think when, I'm just looking at the very first one, renewable energy. So, increase our use of renewable energy. That's gonna happen no matter what because PG&E is mandated to do that. But, um, so we can say that, right? We can say we could, but in order to have it be quantifiable, I think you would have to say increase the use of renewable energy by some percentage. And I'm not, I don't feel that I'm qualified to say what percentage makes sense. It might make sense for us to put that in there and ask the consultants to come back with a recommendation on,
Oh, yeah.
What is reasonable.
And what would reach our ultimate goal.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I agree. I'm, I'm just talking about form right now. I'm not saying any particular percentage. But, but you bring up a good example where they just, they name a subject and they say a general thing of, oh, let's do this, without saying, let's do this to this extent, and which I assume the consultants, like on, on TR1, they will be able to, if, once they come up with a percentage and they look at everything that we're saying as far as the substantial evidence supporting that, they will be able to come up with a calculation of. of what the GHD reduction would be for that. I, I'm just, most of this is just kind of wishy-washy to me. But at least the, the Rencon consultant did, after I copied down what he said and really looked at it hard, first, it didn't make any sense to me, what he was saying. But now I understand, he's talking about, you look at what your goal is and the percentage decrease or increase that you're including in that goal, then you can come up with these mandated or non-mandated supporting provisions under the strategies. So anyhow, that's, I'm suggesting that we suggest or recommend to the consultants that they adopt, adopt that form, so that we eventually will get a, a calculation from them.
I'm not sure that's going to be at all feasible on some of these. If you look at, under the energy, what is now category, education and outreach, you're going to be conducting education and outreach to people and so forth. I don't know how you quantify, quantify that at all.
Well, you might not.
Well, I think, I think you take a look at all the strategies under energy and, and say, okay, if we do all that, what percentage increase are we going to have on renewable energy?
But what Kelly's pointing to is the education and outreach category. So we could say, increase education and outreach. We can make everything an active statement, so, which is what your mandate idea is saying. But I don't know that we, quantifying education and outreach is maybe not one we'd bother to put in a, we're, we're not going to increase our education and outreach by what percentage in what way, and it's, and it's something that's going to ripple through every category on some level, right? So that's what you're.
That's my point, my other.
Yes.
Problem with this is, okay, let's assume that the consultants come up with some percentages or some quantification, and it, that's, that's now a mandate. What happens to the county if it doesn't make it?
You modify your plan.
And how much?
That's why you, you qualify a lot of it with that overarching, with dependent on our ability to obtain funding for it. But then I think we have to show that we're out looking for funding.
Yeah, that's what, the active word of pursue, I think if you say pursue funding before just about everything in here, everybody agrees that as of right now, that fills the purpose. Then you have to actually pursue it.
Right.
I, I, you know, I, I still think that if we're going to have a separate category of activities, and we're saying, by putting it in here, that will decrease our greenhouse gases, I think you need to put in a, a percentage or a, some sort of goal for them to base some calculations on. I, I agree with you. Commissioner Rooster, I don't want to be the person that does that, but the whole point of this is that it's a greenhouse gas reduction plan, and each element should reduce greenhouse gases.
Although, in my mind, another overarching thing for me is to prioritize those items that will have other direct benefits to our communities above and beyond the reduction of greenhouse gases, but will also reduce greenhouse gases.
And that brings up.
But that could be part of that coordinator's job to prioritize those.
Well, that brings up a really good point that was made by Tom Infusino in the materials that everybody received yesterday online. On page three of his 51122 letter, he actually shows how we can have two-fers. I haven't looked at each one of these, but I think this is a marvelous idea, that various measures within the greenhouse gas reduction plan reflect what we're already committed to do but not yet doing under our general plan. And I would also recommend that, that the, the consultants be supplied with the Infusino letter and attachments, which has a 35-page listing of these various general plan things, to make sure that they are covered. Because right now, the county is, is awash in all these, these priorities under the, the general plan implementation measures that it hasn't yet provided the priorities for. And if we can make those, if we can make the greenhouse gas reduction measures consistent with what's in the, the general plan, consistent meaning provides as much as the provisions in the general plan, and if possible, actually uses the language that's used in the general plan. I think it's a great opportunity for a two-for-the-price-of-one program. And I, I have not gone through everything that Mr. Infusino has said matches up, but I think it would be a great benefit if the consultants got this list that he has provided us, plus the exhibits that he included, which includes all these general plan implementation measures, and plug those in to the reduction list. I think it's a great opportunity.
So it seems like there is general support for getting a staff person. There's support for crafting our language in such a way that it is funding-dependent in many cases. It, I, I am supportive of making the category labels more of an active item, so, so that we are talking about doing something, not just naming a category. I believe that we need to be careful about those percentages and let the consultants help us with that, to get to where we need to go both and to not commit ourselves to something that's unachievable. I know, we'd love to, lots of things that might.
Committing to percentages is a slippery slope.
Yeah, but you're going to have to have a goal of something.
You have to, you have to compute somewhere.
Yeah, so I think, and I think that prioritizing things that provide benefits to our communities and help us fulfill our other obligations under the general plan, those are all good things. I have another general action that I think applies to kind of all of our categories, and that's that we should be reviewing all of our codes and ordinances to make sure that we remove stumbling blocks to achieving things, as opposed to necessarily mandating something. Let's just make sure we're not in the way of somebody being able to do it, if they want to do it. And a lot of that stuff is codified by the state anyway. I mean, they're, you know, it used to be that people could say they didn't want to allow solar panels in their neighborhood, but you can't do that anymore. So, but I, I'm sure that if we dug through all of, as part of our zoning ordinance, we just need to be careful that we support the things we want to achieve, or at the very least, don't get in the way of them.
That, that's, I fully agree with you, but that, I think we need another position to go through our codes, to find those.
Well, it's happening already, so I think it's just something we need to be aware of whenever we're doing it. But, but is that something we can commit to, to doing over time, is working our way through? And it seems like it would fit in almost every category, that we look at what our policies are, we look at what our regulations are.
Gina, you might cite the consultants to the few minutes that the chair has just taken as, in a summary, so that they, they don't have to watch the whole, the whole tape, but I think you did a good job.
And then I have one, one more sort of item under here that I had talked to Gina about a little bit, which is, I think the county could look for money to upgrade all of our technology, to make it more accessible to people from home, and to make people more independent in obtaining the information that they need. So they don't need to take up staff time to ask for things that really, there's no reason that they're not available online to download and have that information themselves. They still might need staff time to help them understand it in some cases, but also that they could access it remotely, which we're in the process of doing that. We have a pretty great start on GIS, and a lot of it could be incorporated into that. So could our IT department come up with some ideas of things that are quantifiable in reducing people's use of transportation, our big, our big carbon issue, to drive to the county in such a spread-out county? If people could get to that information more easily online, I think we could quantify that. But also, we, we struggle so much with staffing. It would also reduce staffing, so it would be one of those two for wins.
While, while we're at it, and we, we, you know, we stress we want to hear from staff, we have our planning director here.
Yeah.
And would you like to chime in with something?
Good afternoon, commissioners. I've been kind of listening to your, to your discussions, and I think with, the more I listen to your deliberations, the more comfortable I feel that you do truly understand the, the, the implications of what you have in front of you, or the role that you play in, in, in the implementation of these goals and policies. And let me step back a little bit and, and talk about, address the comments made by the chair regarding making sure we don't get, getting, getting our way of, of being able to implement some of the things that we may want to. Now, the, the master document for the city, for the county, and to that effect, for the planning department, is the general plan. You know, we, we, we spend money putting together an environmental impact report that has all kinds of mitigation measures and, and goals for that matter, you know, looking 25, 30 years ahead. Those goals and policies will put into place for us to follow. Now, what we need to do is to make sure that as time goes on, that through the mitigation measuring process, we start addressing how well we have done, what have we accomplished. On, on the bigger subject of infrastructure, I, I am hopeful that, you know, the, the President's Infrastructure Bill is something that cities and counties and states can benefit from. When, when access to internet becomes a, a, a natural commodity, then some of the things we are trying to accomplish will be very, very simple, our, our information gathering processes will be simpler, our, our internet services to our community members will be much more interactive. Because right now, there's a discrepancy between having knowledge and being able to disseminate that knowledge and the recipients of that knowledge. When you live in an area where you don't have these kinds of services, you have interrupted internet services, it is sometimes difficult to do some other things that the chair just described. It, it doesn't matter how much information we post on our website, when your internet service is interrupted because of your location, and that's very common in, in this county, you're not able to sustain, you know, to get sustained information. And that even happens to, to county employees who live in, in some other parts of the county. So there are a lot of things that go into play when, when we're talking about where we need to be in the future, but understanding that the impact of greenhouse gases is significant, that we as a county need to take it seriously, and that you as the planning commission are making these deliberations, you know, understand the implications of your actions. Now, one thing I have to agree with, 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 you know, with the, with the discussions earlier also, is that I would have preferred to have seen, perhaps, maybe you would have preferred to have seen, some kind of a tally that shows that if we, for example, complied with this particular program, it would reduce greenhouse gases by 10 points, or five points, or zero, or five percent, or two percent, or three percent. You know, this, this dialogue has taken place between, between me and, and, and our consultants, and they're telling me that it is impossible to do that, because if you saw that on paper, I think it would make your deliberations a lot easier, because we would understand that, well, you know, if we do this, we reduce our greenhouse gas impacts by 10 points, but if we do this, it goes, it would, it's reduced by 15 points. If we do that, it goes down, you know, we reduce it by, by one point. On the contrary, what you have in front of you is the impacts being around as a, as a, as a list of importance, and what that importance is based on is, is not really clear. Is it importance on the environment, or is it importance based on the position of the county itself? Take the issue of the county's free-to-vehicles, for example. You know, by year 2030, 2035, it would be impossible to be able to purchase gasoline-driven engines for vehicle, for motor vehicles, because we want to electrify, you know, the free-to-vehicles in the state. Now, one would assume that government, i.e. the state and the counties, should be the leaders in that front, but we have challenges. Where, you know, we, you know, we start talking about funding. At, at the county level, what we are talking about is, what are we going to do with our existing fleet? How do we amortize the life of a vehicle we just purchased, you know, a couple of years ago? Do we do it by mileage, or do we do it by age of the vehicle, et cetera, et cetera? So the county itself is still struggling with issues like that. So to, to be able to, to, to look at 2035 and say, oh, yeah, we'll be able to electrify all our vehicles, there's just way too many questions that is left unanswered. Hopefully, as time goes on, and, and, and with, and with the President's Infrastructure Bill, we are hopeful that funds will become available. One of the major stumbling blocks to electrify vehicles would be the ease of being able to charge these vehicles. There are certain communities now that as, as developments are being approved, charging stations are becoming a, a standard condition in your garage. You know, you, you have a charger for electric vehicle, if it's a multifamily development, you know, maybe there'll be a, a set of carports that would have these charging stations. would have these charging stations in them. You know, the driving through LAX the other day is like, this place has really changed because at the international terminal, they have a slew of parking spaces now that are strictly dedicated towards electric vehicles. That was not there before. So it, it seems like the examples are being set. The county of, of Galaveras doesn't have the resources that LAX has as far as being able to build infrastructure and build them in a timely manner. However, they are partnering agencies, the utility agencies, some council of governments that would help the city figure out, why can we build charging stations in your community? Because the county, as you know, is way spread out and, and going from one part of a district to another part of the district could take, you know, take a couple of hours of, of driving. So it is not easy, but I think we need to start thinking towards the future. How, if this is going to happen, how we're going to be able to facilitate electrifying the city's, you know, fleet, fleet of vehicles, not just the cities, but our own personal cars as well? If this is the direction we're trying to, we're trying to go. So with that in mind, I, I really, I appreciate the sense of dedication that I've seen to this subject matter. You guys did not take it, you know, you know, lightly. You know, the, the, some of the communication I've seen coming through the planning commission has been very, very encouraging, but we need to start setting that standard. And from our part, in the planning department, we need to go back to the general plan and the EIR mitigation measures and all those goals and policies that we spent, you know, months developing. We need to start making sure that we start implementing them through the mitigation process so that when the time comes, we can tell you that, well, you know, we have done the following things to facilitate putting the county in a position where we can, you know, mix your decisions with the GHG policies you have in front of you a little easier to swallow. So I, I, I commend your efforts. You know, I, I thank you for the time you spent and, and I want to assure you that on our end, we're going to do these things to make sure that we get out of our own way. So we're not going to say we're going to be friendly to the environment and then do things that is really contrary to that. And if we have those kind of conflicting policies in any of our documents, we're going to start revisiting them.
I have a question for you. I, I take it from what you said about getting the general plan mitigation measures actually operable, that you would agree with the idea of, of having the consultants look at those and compare them to what they have put in their list and make sure that they, to the extent possible, the general plan mitigation measures are covered by the consultant's list?
Yes, yes. And I, and I think maybe in retrospect, what we may have done, and I don't believe the consultants actually did this because this whole thing, you know, kind of got started before I got here, is, is be, be able to identify which one of the goals you have in front of you are actually specified or identified in the general plan itself. So that you don't look at it as if, oh, we're doing, we're doing something bad new if it's, you know, and, and, and I think the, you know, the, the email we received yesterday from the Galaveras County Coalition, you know, is basically pointing to that direction that, you know, some of these, we, we could not have done a, a general plan a few years ago without addressing greenhouse gas effects. So the question now is, which one of those policies, even our general plan, is also included on the list that you're looking at and, and, and by, and to make sure that we're not reversing ourselves on what we have committed ourselves to in our general plan document? So, so perhaps giving you a, a broader, a broader picture of, you already have this on your, in our general plan, so deliberating this is not even going to be, you know, purposeful because we're already, we're already admitted to it by, by, by adopting the general plan, approving it and approving the, the environmental impact report and its mitigation measures. Perhaps if you have been given that piece, then it would make your deliberations a little bit more clear so that you know that, you know, what we're looking at on paper here is also something that we have previously committed ourselves to.
I'm, I'm concerned by your understanding from the consultants that they're not going to come up with figures as to what reductions they expect from these things.
That's no, I don't think that's.
I think that's, as I understand, it's the whole point. They're going to come up eventually with, here's our plan and here's how it will reduce GHG to the level required under the general plan. And I certainly don't want to let the consultant off the hook from doing that because we're certainly not going to be qualified to do it.
Right.
I don't think that's what he said.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't think that's what, what he was implying.
Okay.
Just that we need to be careful about it.
Yeah.
So my goal here had been to have a few overarching thoughts that we could give to the consultants so that we didn't wordsmith every single item in here because we know how this particular planning commission will, we will each want to rewrite every item. I'm trying to avoid that so by having that overarching, here's some overarching ideas we all agree on. I actually went and looked at other places that were working on this again, and I could see that this entire list is absolutely the exact same list everybody is working from. So, you know, this is not, not something tailored to us, which we knew. They, they told us they were giving us the whole list of items. So I'm thinking that if we quickly can go back through, look at those items that we said were no goes last time, make sure that we intend for them to be a no go or that we intend for them to be modified slightly. And then by that time, we're going to have such momentum, we're going to roll through the rest of them with our new understanding of our goal here and be able to pass this on to them because I think otherwise we're going to get really tied up in little tiny items and.
And as I pointed out in, in what I submitted, the, the consultants invited commissioners to do this.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm not intruding into their territory.
No, no. And I think each of us are still welcome to send our comments.
Sure.
To Gina and she'll pass them on.
Absolutely.
But I'm just trying to get us through this today. We don't want it to drag on another.
I agree.
Another session. And I think that we all do have a kind of a global agreement on what we need to do here. Some of us are going to interpret things differently, but we know we need to move along and, and get it done. So the first, let's just see if everybody has the same item. The first item that I have us truly X-ing out is TR 2.6. And that was providing transportation subsidies to county employees to assist with the purchase of EVs or ZEVs. And I think we all agree that we shouldn't be subsidizing our employees' commutes over every other person in the county's commute, but that expanding and making sure that there are charging stations available to them, which is covered in other areas, does make sense.
Madam Chair, if I may, if I may chime in on that issue. The subsidies are already currently available. When you, when you file taxes, if you purchase an electric vehicle, there's, there's, there's tax benefits to it. So that's already been provided. So I'm not sure if this particular item here is on top of that, you know, because, you know.
This item was the county proposing subsidies. This item proposed the county provide a subsidy to its employees, not that there weren't subsidies available. And we talked about that last time. There are other subsidies available. Okay, what was your item, Kelly, that was previous to that though?
Yeah, it was ZNE dash one was one.
ZNE. Well, um.
That's the reach codes?
Yeah, where was that? How far?
I don't have GME before that. I must be out of order here.
ZNE.
ZNE, ZNE. Oh, ZNE dash one pursue reach codes. We, yes, so we did say we don't want to mandate reach codes.
Right. We did say that.
We did.
You guys lost me.
Yeah, I'm lost too.
It's, I think.
What section are we in?
It's actually in the new construction section.
Ah.
Right, that's why we weren't finding it. So that, that's correct. I don't think that means we shouldn't consider incentives for projects that want to go above and beyond. And that incentive could be something other than money that the county provides to them. Maybe the, the county would be willing to prioritize them in plan checkings so that a project that is especially a multifamily project that has other benefits to the county could maybe get a more prompt plan check if they were proposing to be zero energy. Wouldn't cost us anything, it would just, but it would be another thing to manage. I don't think we're going to see that many projects in our county that it would apply to, but I think anything that makes it more attractive to a developer, like time is money for developers, and affects our ability to get more housing built, especially rental housing, maybe there's an opportunity there. But I don't know that we have to identify the specific item. We just need to say we're not, we don't want to mandate reach codes, but we'd be, we would consider other things that would encourage that.
I think that's in ZNE dash four.
Mm-hmm. That's renewable energy generation and storage, yeah.
And I had a question whether we had thought that, whether EB dash six, which is Implement Residential and Commercial Energy Conservation Ordinances that require energy and water efficiency upgrades at the point of sale prior to selling the home or building. My notes just saying, I can't support that. I don't remember.
I don't think we did.
We discussed it a little bit. I actually do support it. I just think you have to be careful about making sure that it's cost effective, the items that you, if you're going to require them. So right now, there's a state code that requires that plumbing fixtures be upgraded whenever you do any kind of other project throughout the entire house, not to current standards, but to a couple of standards back, actually. Strange piece of legislation.
Madam Chair, if I may, if I may make, show me a comment on that. It could even be simple things as the appliances, the refrigerator, the stoves, the washing machine. I, I see utility agencies actually offering rebates to, to upgrade to more environmentally friendly appliances. That could be one of those things. If you have some specific concern about how that particular item is worded, perhaps bringing some clarity in, into what you expect because, again, I have to agree with you, cost is going to be significant. When somebody's trying to unload a house and then they have this requirement that before they can unload it, they have to do all these upgrades to it, a couple of things are going to happen. They, you know, they're going to pass on the cost of doing it to the buyer or they just may say, you know, we, we can't really afford to do it. So if you, if you want to clarify what your level of comfort is, that would be, that would be fantastic because again, like I said, there are utility agencies that are, you know, providing incentives to replace your refrigerator with, with more environmentally friendly ones and, and all kinds of appliances. And even if you limit it to that, it's still not, you know, as significant as doing a lot of other things. The windows, double pane windows, making sure that, you know, the exchange of external air and internal air is, is limited, that has been in the works for quite a while. So I think we're making progress as, as we kind of move, as, as we move along in this new challenge that we're going to be facing.
It seems to me that in that particular provision, either you could, if you replaced require with provide incentives for, that's a mean mouth way of looking at it, or require reasonable energy or feasible energy and water efficiency or, I don't know if Commissioner Rooster has a suggestion as to making it a little more palatable.
I think I just have a little problem with the county getting in the middle of a person trying to sell his house to somebody else. You take the point as it was.
And, and some people could potentially be underwater on their house and they can't afford to do this. And how do you force something like that on it? Then the bank has to get involved because it's a sale.
Absolutely.
That doesn't make any sense.
You could actually provide incentives as relief from a portion of the transfer tax.
Incentives make sense, but mandating that they have to do it prior to the sale of the home, to me, just doesn't seem feasible.
But I mean, as a part of the sale of the home, if the county cut down on the amount of transfer tax.
Sure.
If they did these things.
But then that leaves the county coffers a little short too.
Yes, it does.
Potentially, and we're already short, so.
Well, it does.
It's a catch 22.
So what if we reworded this to say investigate residential and commercial energy conservation ordinances that require energy and water efficiency upgrades at the point of sale prior to selling the home or building? That would, we don't have the answer now of what is cost effective and what there are reasonable rebates available for. But if we don't deal with our existing housing stock, we're not going to take care of our issue. So, and that does provide a benefit to the, the buyer and oftentimes for the seller because they will get more money for it if they have a new, more efficient whatever. But I don't think that we would want to just mandate it so blank, so broadly without looking into what kinds of things.
How about investigate residential blah, 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 blah?
Yeah.
Regarding energy and water efficiency updates. So we take the require out, so it's still a possibility if that's what the conclusion would be.
We could say that incentivize or require.
Yeah, okay. How are you doing on that?
Well, incentivize means that somebody has to be providing the incentive.
Yep.
And I don't know who that would be.
But you know, the Air Resources Board used to provide money to swap out appliances. I'm sure that that program is probably still available and will probably get funded under some of these new programs. And so there may be opportunities out there, which I think is what our planning director was trying to direct us to, that we don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater, but we also don't want to say, oh, you're going to change your heating and cooling system before you can sell your house, you know? So I, I think we leave it in as an investigation. It's something that can be looked at if we can create a program around it at some point if there.
If, if available.
If available, right. But we won't know until we investigate it. None of us know enough about it.
I think if you use the word investigate and change require to regarding.
That's fine.
Cool.
I'd be good with that. Okay, do you have another one before my? Or does anybody else have something that they marked as coming out? Or does anybody else have something that they marked as coming out? I think most of the transportation stuff we decided just needed, that really needed to do it anyway.
I think.
A general.
That's the, yeah, I have that one marked.
General comment on the, on the transportation. I don't know, you always looked at the Central Sierra Zero Emission Vehicle Readiness Plan. It's a very detailed plan. We're very, I mean specifically, where are you going to have these charging stations in Murfrees? And where are you going to, I mean, if, if, if our experts, our county staff thinks it's good and CCOG thinks it's good, then I, what I'm proposing in my writing is that, that the consultants overall, you know, that implement the recommendations of that, then underneath, all these things underneath it, some of them are not consistent with the Central Sierra Zero Emission Vehicle Readiness Plan. We did deal with the 50% of total parking places.
Right.
In TR 1.2 the other day. But everything below TR 1.1 should be reconsidered by the consultants in light of the Central Sierra Zero Emission Vehicle Readiness Plan. So if, if we're just adopting things that are being also adopted in San Mateo and County itself, this all should be considered in light of the Central Sierra Zero Emission Vehicle Plan. And particularly, the, uh, there's, Calaveras County has a, specifically applying to Calaveras County, there's an appendix to this Zero Emission Vehicle Readiness Plan that deals with the permitting process. So TR 1.4 should at least mention that. All I'm saying is that they should really consider this whole page in light of the Central Sierra Zero Emission Vehicle Readiness Plan. Now, it's a 2019 plan, maybe there's things that need to be updated, but.
So could we ask them to conform our language to the local plan?
Yeah.
Instead of leaving it so generic?
Yes, and make sure it is consistent, or if it isn't, why not?
Since we already.
Yeah, we already said, let's do it.
Yeah.
I agree that the consultants should review that plan. And where what they suggest here is inconsistent with something that's in that plan that makes sense.
Yep.
They should change it. I do not agree that we should be implementing recommendations of that plan. That is like 168 pages. And much of that is properly devoted to advising people on how to cite electric charging stations, where to put them, what kind to put in, that kind of thing. And the county's not going to be doing that. Somebody else is going to be doing that. So just to embrace that whole plan as a county mandate doesn't work for me. It certainly works to make sure there's, we're not running afoul of something in that plan that does fit this county and that, that plan is a for-county plan. But it is pretty detailed, as Commissioner Platch has pointed out.
So it seems like we, we just want to make sure that they go together, not that we want to say that every single 168 pages worth of details are something that we're adopting as part of this. But that all of the statements that are in here should be at least consistent with what's in there.
Or give us a reason why it's not.
Yeah, or give us a choice between the two and we'll, that makes sense. So the, the other item I had that we were discussing was provide transportation subsidy. No, that's the next one. It's the one about bicycles. Where'd that go?
It's probably TR 4 dash.
Yeah.
4.1.
Right, here it is, it's circled. Provide transportation subsidy to lower income households to assist with purchase of bicycles. TR 4.5. So that's one that we discussed and I had written no next to. I don't know that we want to provide it, but, but if there are transportation subsidies available, we could certainly inform people of it.
It, the work commutes, I think, is what really we stumbled on.
Yes.
That I, I had it down as not, not feasible for our county.
Right.
And I also have 4.7 and 4.9 as no?
Yes, let's see, and I have those marked too.
Yeah.
And I have a question marked by 4.8.
So I think that we talked about that, all of those.
I think there was a question as to what the Green Street program was.
Yes, we didn't know what the Green Street program was.
For now.
And if Calaveras County had one, and I forgot to look that up. I'm going to tell.
If we do, that is fine.
Yeah, so that was just a question. Do we have one? I think the ad paid parking to key visitation locations to encourage blah, blah, blah is fine, but we're probably not going to have many situations where that's. It's just not that applicable in most of the county. There might be a few spots that, that it would work.
I had that down as our saying no.
Yeah, I said not a good fit.
And it's not applicable right now, but it could become applicable down the road and then it would be mandated.
It could, and you could, you could say assess adding paid parking to, so that in the future, if, if it becomes reasonable, we do it. But I just don't think we can say, oh, we're going to do that next year in any place.
I'd say the costs would outweigh the benefits too. That the, if we have that in there at all, I'd change the word encourage to fund encouragement of transit use or something of that sort. So that the money that goes into the meter goes to this purpose. Not, it's not just a negative, it's a positive.
Yeah, that's, that's actually, right. So, so you could investigate it, you could evaluate it. We're not going, I don't think we should say we're going to add it. And I do think that then it wouldn't be encouraging, it would help fund.
This brings up another question. This, this plan, the GHD reduction plan is for the entire county, including Angels Camp. And I.
No, Angels Camp is doing its own plan.
They are doing their own plan?
Yes, and it's, they have exactly the same list of items to evaluate.
But it's, I read our GHD reduction, uh, general plan thing as, as applying to the, to the entire county. So, okay, so they're doing their own plan.
And there's soliciting comments right now. They're, and they're asking for comments on this same list from the public.
So the consultants that we're working with are also working with the city to develop their plan.
Makes sense since it came through the COG, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So are we rethinking 4.9 then?
Well, I'm not in favor of it in any form. I don't want to spend any money investigating it.
I, I don't feel strongly one way or another. It wouldn't stop us from doing it.
I think it's an idea before its time. I mean, it, and, and if Angels isn't part of this, Murfrees is the only place I can think of that this makes sense.
So we're leaving it at no then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fine. And then seven? As share, oh yeah, that's not a, that 4.7 is probably.
That was, I had it as NF.
Yeah, I think that's a no-go one, too.
So 4.5, 4.7, 4.9. On the previous page, we have 2.6, I have 2.4. TR 2.4 as a no.
2.4.
I just have question marks there. I don't, I don't know what we discussed it.
I, yeah. I don't, I don't know that we need a collaboration of stakeholders.
Again, it's probably.
If we get money to do EV charging stations, we're going to have to have a group of people, that's fine. But this makes it sound like we're creating a whole nother layer here.
And it's an area that's covered by the Central Sierra.
Right, exactly, so.
I would be comfortable if we're not there.
Yeah, I, I think that's good. Okay, so that's it for transportation? So, yes, I believe so. So solid waste.
Been through transportation, we've worked through energy.
We're getting closer.
So we're now on trash.
We're getting closer.
My favorite topic. I, I think so much of this is mandated that I'm not sure.
I, looks like we've already been through solid waste.
I have a couple of the marks, but nothing marked out.
I've got notes on things, but yeah, nothing is marked out as a, this is not a good idea.
In my, in my submission, I'm asking, well, why aren't we bringing in all the other, uh, stuff? Solid waste and other dumps that were farther away than Antigua, so.
Right.
I also think that this Integrated Waste Department would probably be better equipped to speak about this and what, what we could add to get credit and what we were already mandated to do.
Wouldn't it be nice if they did speak up about this?
Yeah, I don't know that we've coordinated or invited them here yet, so.
No, Gabriel and I are working on that effort. We've sent out this list to numerous county agencies and slightly beyond. Some of the fire stuff went out to Cal Fire and the fire districts and so on and so on. We reached out to all the water districts and the sanitary districts and sent them on their, you know, perspective, asking for input. So like I said, I've gotten little input by folks, mostly our ag folks, the ag commissioner, farm advisor, still waiting for some of those real, you know, kinds of comments that we were really searching for. It was just general kind of an issue, initial, you know, reaction kinds of things. So we're still waiting for something that we can actually use. Are we ready to move on to Kelly and Dawn's favorite topic, agriculture?
How about water and wastewater?
Well, I'm not quite done with solid waste.
Okay.
I thought for the second two, SW dash two, diverting waste from forward to Rock Creek and methane capture. It was left that we would have to get input from the solid waste handling people on those two. But on SW one, which is the organic waste diversion program, I thought that the board had already acted on that and done what it was going to do and nothing was going to happen for the next five years. That's my recollection of the discussion, so I don't know why that's in there.
I, well, this plan is longer than five years and I don't think we have an option but to be moving toward that. But we have five years in order to achieve the goals, is that correct, Julie?
So I, I think one of the open questions was whether, because most counties, or I shouldn't, I don't know about most in number, but the more populous counties are required to do, have in place right now, an organics diversion, a full organics diversion program that is compatible with the regulations under SB 1383. We got, because of our low population, we were given a rural exemption exempting us from the bulk of it, but not from certain programs. So we have certain portions, smaller portions of SB 1383 that we're now required to comply with, but we're not required to comply with the rest yet. And so it could be a pretty great source of credit if it turns out that a rural exemption allows us to get credit for the portion we really haven't had to implement yet. Because there's a, there's quite a bit of methane diversion, organic waste diversion that we could do through there. I don't know the numbers, but it would be nice, obviously, since we have to do it anyway, if we could get credit under a plan.
Jump on it and get some credit. So, but I think that, I just feel like we need the solid waste folks to tell us what's possible.
Well, I agree. I mean, to the extent it's already required by 1383, I don't think it can be counted in our GHD reduction. As you say, if we jump ahead and do things that we're not yet required to do, that would work, work to our credit.
And it's certainly to our benefit to start looking at what's possible and slowly implementing things instead of all of a sudden five years from now going, oh, my, we haven't done anything.
Which is what happens most of the time, unfortunately.
And this is, this is another big county versus little county thing. This is really assuming there is a trash collection.
Yeah.
Program that, you know, people can put their organic trash in a particular size or green, or color compartment and stick it out in their driveway. But I don't know how many people in the county, I don't know what proportion of the county does what my wife and I do and just drive to the dump every week or so.
There's a whole nother thing in that we're rural county and a lot of people have home gardens and have their own composting. And more and more people are doing that. And could we get credit for that if we were able to quantify that at all? Or if even our education and outreach could provide information to encourage people to do that, even though we're not going to be able to weigh how much is getting diverted from landfill? It is getting diverted from the landfill.
I take a lot on my ranch, I know a lot of people are starting to do it.
Yeah.
I compost.
Well, so we punt this and just say we're waiting for the solid waste people to.
Right, but we, but we'd like the consultants to at least look at if you can quantify home composting. If there's any information for rural areas. Because I think there's a lot of people who are doing some amount of it. Or feeding their dog scraps. Or their chickens, or, you know.
My chickens eat just about.
Yeah.
Worms and chickens and.
Are we on to water and wastewater?
Yes.
Yeah, I had a comment on WW1, which requires the county to upgrade treatment equipment or processes to achieve energy savings. Increased energy efficiency would reduce energy demand per gallon treated. But according to the inventory, the county doesn't have any of those facilities.
Yeah, I mean WW1, in the other column, specifically refers to county operated water and wastewater treatment facilities. And I'm here, I said, huh? There aren't any.
Right.
So I think this is another example where they, I think they have to look at this whole water and wastewater thing, recognize that the percentage of Calaveras County residents who are on wells and septic tanks and, and, and recognize that the county isn't in this business and come up with a new set. I mean, I just think it's.
But CCWD is the county's public utility. And so even though we don't own it, I know, but it's designated as the county's. And so we could find out what they're doing and see if it needs, needs to be melded into here. I think probably we need to find out what everybody's doing because it doesn't mean we wouldn't get credit for it if it's actually being done by them anyway. And I think a lot of it is because it's to their benefit to make their facilities more efficient.
Maybe I should reach out to them specifically about that measure?
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be great. Because, you know, reclaimed water, well, I mean, I don't, I don't know what you have on your ranch. Do you have wells or?
I have wells and septic, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, do you have a way of, of pressurizing your groundwater to go into the places you want? Or it just kind of goes out the back and into where if you want?
Yeah.
It, it just, this whole thing does not seem to recognize this as a rule. It just, this whole thing does not seem to recognize this as a rural county, and we don't have a bunch of pipe systems for these various things.
I think my question on W W dash two would be, until I don't see any information of this effect, is there, is there reclaimed water out there now that's not being used now, that feasibly could be made available to county-owned public places or anyplace else?
I see in Valley Springs, they sprinkle, it seems, I've seen that for years. They sprinkle theirs, they don't reuse it in another way. They just let it evaporate, basically, is what they're trying to do. It's an evaporation process.
Well, they irrigate with it some places.
Yeah, well, I know they do on the side of the hill, but I don't know if they're.
Yeah, there are some, like, I think Forest Meadows Golf Course uses reclaimed water, but they don't use enough to use up all the tree of water that's available, and so, a lot of it is just brayed, so that it can evaporate. So, could, the problem, I think, that I've heard in the past is, we couldn't like require it for certain uses. A lot of, most urban areas require that golf courses use reclaimed water.
And La Conntente does. I was gonna buy La Conntente, and I remember now, they do a lot of reclaimed water for their irrigation. They have a big pipe that comes from, from the county.
And another thing is, like, car washes often use reclaimed water, but for us, that we have that distribution issue of where the water's available isn't always anywhere near where we would want to be able to use it.
Or that you could use it.
But I'm sure this is something that all of the wastewater folks are looking at, because it's an issue for them. It costs them money to do it. So, I think we could probably get information from them on what they're doing and what they're hoping to do in the future, but the county can't do it.
Who, I mean, C C W D does, what?
What about C P U D? There was also, I don't know how many utility, public utility districts there are, but we probably wanna get credit from everything.
Exactly. There's quite a lot of them, but C C W D is the biggest, because they have tentacles out all, all the way up Highway four.
I think we can say that this area is important. All in favor of using reclaimed water, I'm all in favor of using gray water, but we need information from the utilities within the county as to what can be done and what can be incentivized. Incentified, well, you know.
I just don't see how the county gets involved with this, 'cause the county doesn't create any reclaimed water itself. It doesn't have any say about what other people do with their reclaimed water. There's no showing that there's any, any place that the county could affect the use of reclaimed water.
Yet we could pursue funding, grant funding for coordination of these services by the water districts within the county.
Well, I think it's, there's partnership potential here in that we could look at a partnership, if the county was eligible for funding that would help develop some of these things, or improve the efficiency of equipment, that the utilities were not directly eligible to obtain, then, you know, would we partner with them to help them get that? But we, we would do that anyway if they came to the county and said, hey, you know, help us get this, this money. I mean, they do it all the time to upgrade their treatment plants, so they get low-cost money.
Well, this says the measure W W dash two requires the use of reclaimed water for outdoor uses. Really? How is the county gonna do that?
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. And I think this is, this is, the way this is worded, I mean, I'm all in favor of the goal, but it's worded for urban county and not for us.
We don't have the infrastructure to be able to do that.
No, no, we don't.
Maybe it's a little more realistic if we look at W W three, gray water usage.
Well, again.
I mean, yeah, but if you think about, I mean, you also have onsite wastewater systems on, you know, the rural parcels in our county. If the, if the county environmental health department onsite wastewater division had an approved plan for the reuse of a gray water system, you know, gray water, then, you know, that might be included.
The state has, has.
Yeah, it's my understanding that we don't have anything adopted here in our county, so.
That's my understanding. Also, they're not excited about it, but we, that would be a get out of the way thing. If we can change our ordinance to recognize what's already been created by somebody else and to allow that, but also, because we have so many septic systems, those are already recharging groundwater, because there's nowhere else for that water to go besides back in the ground. And so, is there some way to quantify that because we're a rural area, we're already inherently contributing in some way?
But I don't know that that's greenhouse gas emissions.
Yeah, no, I don't know either.
Damn.
Well, but it's wastewater that's not going to a treatment plant and not taking power, and they are looking at their numbers as though every human.
And then you'd be reducing your water intake. I mean, 'cause not every parcel that is on a septic system is also on a well. You know, there are those of us who have onsite wastewater systems and public water.
Right.
But I'm wondering if that all should have been part of the inventory. We're not.
But they didn't inventory at that level of specificity. Is that a nice way to say that?
But, you know, it's not measures that we're now.
Well, if there's a way for us, I think there, because we're a rural county and so spread out, and we're using less resources and creating less greenhouse gases in a lot of ways than other places, and we're not, I don't see how we're taking advantage of that. Like, some of the letters we've gotten, they talk about policies to retain open working lands, agricultural lands, forested lands, and appropriately doing a fuel reduction on those lands. You know, all of that does help with greenhouse gases, 'cause we're providing sequestration.
Well, I think we raised that point, and we're told it's not within the scope of the work, and it doesn't count for A B thirty-two gross emissions purposes.
But it doesn't mean we shouldn't mention it.
Yeah, it's still a good idea.
Yeah.
Well, on the gray water, the way this sits is it requires the use of gray water for outdoor uses.
No, we, I think there's, how would we do that? How would we? My other global thing is that we need to be careful of requiring anything that we can't enforce.
Thank you.
And that would be a tough one.
Waste part of the lease.
We use, we have a separate gray water in addition to.
Well, I mean, it could be something that's required for only permits for construction.
But it's, but what's providing the pressure with us, it's, it's gravity. But not everybody has gray water, places to put gray water that's downhill significantly from their sink.
And there's no way to enforce it with, on existing properties without creating a whole nother level of, you could require it for new construction, but it's a significant undertaking to do a code compliant gray water system.
And it would definitely add significant cost to new construction as well, because it's, there's more involved to it than just gravity.
Well, you have to have a whole parallel system.
And then there's odor issues and, you know, plugging filters and.
Yeah, there's maintenance involved with it. It's, like, it may become something that makes sense for us to do, but right now, I wouldn't be in favor of mandating it. I don't know, so it sounds like none of us want to mandate it.
But if it's an option for people.
Well, I think it's under.
I mean, right now, it's not even an option.
I'd love it as an option.
Yeah, let's make sure we don't prevent people from doing it.
Absolutely.
Well, my, I think my takeaway on this is if there is something in the county rules that discourages the use of gray water, we need to get rid of it.
Exactly.
I agree.
But I'm not prepared to go past that and start requiring anything.
Yeah, I think that's what we're all saying.
Other than health and safety rules. Yeah, I mean, you can't just let it flow onto your neighbor's patio.
And it does emit odors, so.
Yeah, unless it's all appropriately treated.
I suppose if it's just sitting there, huh? Gotta use it.
It's part of the.
I think, plant more trees.
Well, I, I think saying that we would remove obstacles to people installing gray water systems compliant with the state's requirements, we can do that, and that's something we can actually chuck off our list pretty quickly.
Good.
With a little bit of cooperation from another department.
Okay, so are we moving on to wastewater four?
Wastewater four, now, I, what's required now as far as low flow and high efficiency water fixtures?
They're already required.
They're in existing buildings, or if you have any change, then you have to use the?
They're required under the building code, green building code, so, and when you do any kind of a project, you are supposed to upgrade all your fixtures in the house, not quite to current standards, but to a reasonable standard. They're not required in existing buildings, but the reality of it is, that's what you can buy in California, so you have to go out of your way. If you go online and try to buy something from a nationwide plumbing company, it will say it won't ship to California.
I'm gonna attest to that with my new faucet.
But what do we do with somebody who?
So, there's nothing, so there's nothing for us to require. It's already required, and unless we were to, to start telling people that they have to change out things that haven't died yet in their homes, I don't.
But, well, clarify what you said as far as, if you have, if you're adding a new door, something.
A door doesn't get a building permit, so there's no way.
Okay, any, okay, give me an example of it.
Let's say you were doing an addition, so, and you were gonna add a master bedroom suite.
Yeah, the whole, the whole house, the fixtures that have to be.
The toilets and the showerheads in the entire house, I believe, are the ones, and it's, it's a state law, it's not a building code issue.
Yeah.
And our building department has a policy on it to inform people, but it's not a, something that's inspected for by, really, at the building code level, 'cause it's not, it might end up in the new code, I don't know.
What would you suggest for W W four?
I, I don't, I think because what you can buy already conforms, and to ask for people to go above and beyond, that makes it hard to even buy that item. It might not be available, and so, I think the only thing that you could do with that would be to have a program run by, usually by the water districts, where they provide some kind of a rebate, and there, that might be possible, for, to encourage people to replace things.
Well, I think the REACH code provision, the example about REACH code is unreasonable, because you might not be able to buy the stuff that conforms with this REACH code. But the paragraph above it is the question as far as.
But you're already required for new development projects. I don't, there's nothing to reach for there.
That's, that's what I was wondering. So, what do we do with it?
I, I mean, I don't think it's reasonable to ask people to exceed that. There, there are ways in big commercial developments or in a big residential development, maybe you could save five percent. Like carefully choosing everything, I don't know that that's gonna make a big difference in, I, it has, look, low impact. So, is it something we want to get involved in?
I think this is an example of spaghetti that got thrown on the wall that shouldn't stick.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I'm not in favor, but I just don't see how it works.
Deleting it?
Well, I mean, the only, the other thing would be to encourage, you know, the installation, just through flyers and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, but I think that could be covered under the earlier partnerships and incentives and education. I do think there are programs out there, and I don't know to what extent our districts really participate in them, so could the county encourage our local water suppliers to participate in programs that provide rebates to people who replace fixtures?
That sounds reasonable.
But where do we get the money to do that?
We don't need any money to do it. They get it, they're eligible, there's programs out there already, so.
But this seems to me, this is the county getting into something it doesn't have to get into. The people who have the incentive to make this happen are the people who provide the water.
Right.
Their state codes are required anyway. You can't buy the stuff other than what's specified here in the state anyway. Why would the county wanna waste money, time, verity, bridge, and so forth, getting into it?
You can buy some super efficient things, they're just not usually the mainstream item that's available, that most people would go to.
I think we probably, we probably all agree that the example should be taken out, but I think that the encouragement of the installation of low flow or high efficiency water fixtures, I mean, you, you could just be as a part of any permit process, people get a handout.
No, that's not where, you're already.
I'm not saying require, I'm just saying they get a handout.
But where you're gonna make a difference is the person who's not getting a permit, who just, their toilet cracked and they need a new toilet, so they're gonna go buy one, and it's going to comply if you, but, so the only option there is to get somebody who has old toilets, doesn't have to replace them, but, but you're gonna encourage them to replace them before they're completely dead, and then they're gonna add that to our solid waste problem. Maybe it's not worth.
And it says requires.
So, are we saying no to four?
That's my vote.
That's why I was asking your limited contribution.
Every time they say requires, that's just.
And it's low impact, so it's not like it's gonna make a big difference.
Goodbye four?
Maybe this is a goodbye one for right now. And now we're inside the area where I don't know enough to even begin to speak about.
I'm sure Kelly will do speaking for it.
I have a feeling she'll have this all covered on that one.
Before we get to the new.
I'm cheering for you.
We're wanting Kelly to get into the weeds of agriculture. So, all we have is fire and ag left, right? So, those are tough ones.
I would point out that going into agriculture, their A G one is limited to fertilizer efficiency, but then they, all their, their strategies go much broader than fertilizer efficiency, so they at least need to change their phrasing.
Yeah, exactly, that the category name needs to reflect what's in the category.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they could have A G one and A G two and whatever, these various agroforestry methods and carbon offset protocol and this sort of thing, but they've, they've stated a very narrow category and then put in a very broad discussion.
It does seem like this is an ag commissioner and farm advisor and the ranching groups.
Okay.
Good, yeah, okay.
If you go through this, A G one point one, one point six, one point seven, and one point eight, all have to do with use of fertilizer and liming. Liming produces, according to the inventory, seventy-three metric tons of C O two equivalent. Fertilizer produces seven thousand six hundred ninety-one metric tons for a total of seven thousand seven sixty-four. That's out of a total of three hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred sixty-nine metric tons per the inventory, which is two point one percent, so this is not a real high-impact area here.
Yeah, but all marked low. Yeah, but all marked low.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know of any information to suggest that the county farmers are not doing what they can do to improve fertilizer efficiency, that's one point one, or limit the loss of nutrients during watering, that's one point three, or not using best practices in fertilizer efficiency, that's one point six, or not matching fertilizer applications with plant nutrient needs, that's one point seven. And I think that the ag commissioner ought to be asked about these matters, because it seems to me it's in the interest of the farmers to do all these things anyway. So to me, that might just be an empty set that's speaking to something that is not an issue. I don't know.
I, and we can look and see what's already being contemplated and what the best practices are, and a lot of this is partner developmental, make sure people know, disseminate the information, that's all fine, that's what his job is.
Okay, then we have one point...
I'm sorry, there.
We have one point two, which says, prepare and adopt prescribed county grazing practices that result in enhanced soil nutrition and increased sulfur carbon sequestration. And a couple of points there, I'm, I'm not sure how enthusiastically the county ranchers are gonna embrace a system when the county comes in and tells them, here's your new prescribed county grazing system, when they've been grazing this ground for about a hundred years in their family to begin with. But more than that, um, I don't see how carbon sequestration counts under this. It doesn't for gross emissions, we've been through that. And I'm not sure what enhanced soil nutrition has to do with the greenhouse gas emissions. So I have a problem with one point two. We probably should get the ag commissioners' input on that, but I am somewhat skeptical of that.
Also, aren't, I thought we determined during the general plan process that none of our soils were fantastic here in the county, and so we have pretty low amounts of cap, like heads of cattle per acre, but low amounts of everything comparatively. So I'm not sure, that's probably why all this stuff is low anyway. Like, no matter what we do, we're not gonna influence things a whole lot.
I would think so.
Seems to me that, I mean, 'cause it is the county ag commissioner, so it is county.
Yes, yeah.
But I, before I pass on any of these, I would certainly need to know what the county ag commissioner says, and, and what the, the U.C. cooperative extension says about these things. And I would, you know, I, I, I do think, I mean, a lot of the stuff in here is gonna affect things that have been going on for a hundred years. And so if, if there was a silver bullet here, that, that's a, there would be greenhouse gas reductions, significant greenhouse gas reductions from doing some of these things involving grazing practices, I'm afraid I would have to be very interested in that, whether or not it's something that's been done for a hundred years.
I think preserving our ranch lands and agricultural lands instead of building homes on them is gonna save us a lot of greenhouse gas emissions.
Well, you know, I have a suggestion.
Policy that...
I have a suggestion in here, and it, it was inspired by the Zeller letter, and Commissioner Rooster's not gonna like this. And, and I'm not being snide, I just know that conservation easements is not your favorite topic.
No, but, yeah.
But on, on page six, I'm suggesting we add AG four to the left-hand column, reduce projected GHG emissions by X percent by 2030 by increased use of conservation easements and other mechanisms. And under the strategies, add an AG four point one, apply for grants from the California Strategic Growth Council and others for a planning grant regarding agricultural conservation easements, agricultural land strategy plans, and other mechanisms that promote GHG reductions and carbon sequestration through preservation of such assets as grasslands and oak woodlands, which I think speaks to the point that you were just mentioning.
And, and it's gonna bring me to an old thorn, which is, I don't think we have an oak woodlands plan still, do we? Did we ever adopt?
I think there's, there's something in the general plan, I think.
Adopt the what?
We have something, but we never really developed a plan, right, for the preservation of oak woodlands?
No.
We talk about it in the general plan.
We talk about it.
And we've talked about it, we've even looked at a plan in the plan, I believe.
And I'm, I'm not saying pursuant to existing policies, I'm saying...
No, I'm not talking about what you're worrying, I'm just saying perhaps developing and adopting that oak woodlands plan might be something that would count in here, towards something, actually finishing off that item, checking that box.
Now, this, and I don't know if I mentioned, but there was a, a, a letter before our first meeting, a letter from Ms. Zeller that, that suggested this, and that's where I'm getting it from. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
All right, on the conservation easement idea, I have talked about this before in previous meetings, but for these purposes, number one, I don't know how one would ever prove that but for a conservation easement being put on a piece of property, that that property would have been developed. When a, a definition hasn't been developed in some hundred and seventy years since California has become a state, how would you ever be able to quantify the, the lack of greenhouse gas emissions by virtue of the fact a conservation easement has been put on property?
A lot of this is gonna be a finger in the wind, just...
Well, this one is particularly speculative. As to carbon sequestration, once again, regrettably, that's not a part of this exercise, when it actually should be, in my judgment, the entire exercise.
Yes.
But I've spoken of that. More generally on conservation easements, 'cause I don't know that Commissioner Parker's had the pain or the benefit of hearing this.
I have open ears.
We'll get out of the way, since we know what's coming.
Okay, the way the world works without a conservation easement, somebody comes up with a proposed project, and somebody has a perceived need to have that project, and it's either consistent with the general plan or the zoning on that property, in which case the public has had a say in whether that project goes forward or not, or it's not. And if it's not, then there has to be a general plan change or a zoning amendment, and again, the public has a say on it. And those decisions are made on the basis of the best information that's available at this time. Now, when somebody puts a conservation easement on a piece of property, those easements are in perpetuity, like forever. There does not need to be, and usually is not, any government input into it or public input. All it takes is a landowner and some willing entity to act as a trustee. You can put anything in there you want, to preserve the land at its natural, historical, and so forth. It could mean nobody could ever sit foot on that land again. Okay. Now, the entire process of determining what's the highest and best use of that property has now been determined forever. Hundred years down the road, the circumstances change, people wanna revisit it and go through the kind of planning process that goes into projects now, you can't do it, because this generation took that ability away from every future generation. And it doesn't matter how much the circumstances have changed, and it doesn't matter how long it takes. Now, you could justify this if you could say, well, this generation is smarter than any generation to come, this generation can see needs further ahead than any generation to come. Where this generation now has better information about what the highest and best use of a piece of property is gonna be way into the future than the people will have then, none of that is defensible. The argument for them is, well, if you don't put a CE on it, somebody might develop it, and then you'll have permanent housing and shopping centers and so forth. Talk to the people who used to live in Paradise and Greenville, not true. That's why I don't like them. I don't think the county ought to encourage them.
I, I didn't catch the gist of your last part.
Developments are not permanent.
Oh, okay.
Places burned down.
Yeah, I would add, for those who haven't looked into it, that conservation easements can have conditions put on them so that you can build such and such, a certain amount on it.
Right, but, but the owner gets to decide.
It's, the, the owner gets to decide that, so I mean, it's, it...
But once they decide it, it's decided forever.
It's decided.
Exactly.
And that's the problem.
That's the problem.
Until somebody modifies the rules.
At some point, yeah, they're, they could, 'cause if everybody puts everything in a conservation easement, obviously that isn't sustainable because populations grow.
But...
Maybe.
You know, it is up to the owner, and if the owner feels strongly that they want to have this preserved, as a grassland say, then all the benefits that accrue to that are guaranteed in the future. It is one thing that would be a surety in a plan such as this. I agree with Commissioner Rooster trying to calculate just how much greenhouse gas you're saving by not having this land open to development. That's a hard, that's a hard calculation to make, and that's why we hire consultants.
We can possibly achieve kind of the same goal just by encouraging Williamson Act.
Yeah.
You know, and, and that is something that, you know, that you can in fact get out of, it takes some effort and, and several years, but it's, it's obviously less restrictive than a conservation easement, but it, it in, in fact achieves the same goal, and that would be open space and less development.
I'd include that within this phrase, agricultural land strategy plans, but I'd be happy to include Williamson Act.
I think just the general plan designation itself does a, a good portion of that and leaves it open for future generations.
Our larger acreages now are designated resource production, which is a minimum forty, um, and they're generally speaking on parcels without, you know, with little infrastructure, uh, you know, roads aren't that great, there is no water, there's no sewer systems, um, so presumably you're not gonna see development, so to speak, at least not the development we're talking about on those lands anyway.
There are conservation easements, I only looked at one that we've brought many years ago through here, that, and again, I can't speak to all of them, or the ones that Mr. Commissioner Rooster's familiar with, that do have provisions where they can be petitioned to be dissolved. They're not easy, but I know that one of the range land trust ones that we looked at, those provisions actually did exist. And so I think the petition goes to the state, there was a, there was a procedure, if that's any solace.
So I think aside from the conservation easement thing, which is a detail of a way in which we would strive to preserve our agriculture and ranch lands, that's really our goal, is, is that we need policies that will preserve it. And that is what we heard from the public, that they want to do anyway in Calvers Canyon, is preserve our rural character, so that, that's a win all the way around. So rather than us try to say specifically what, what the mechanisms they are, but just that, that seems like a very reasonable thing, and I completely agree with Commissioner Rooster and Commissioner, we just, it's very disturbing that we're not recognizing this benefit of rural California to the rest of the state, both in terms of providing water and...
How about if, my proposal, if we eliminated agricultural conservation easements, and we have the generalized language of agricultural land strategy plans and other mechanisms, which, you know, would still possibly encompass conservation easements, would take conservation easements...
Or some future mechanism.
Yeah, some other mechanism, um, just to put in, now, make it even harder to, to calculate what the GHG...
They're not gonna calculate it anyway, so I think recognizing it is the right thing to do.
Okay, so what about taking out agricultural conservation easements and leaving the rest in?
Well, I, I think, I suspect that all of us really would like to preserve the open space where it's, where it makes sense.
I mean, we have a lot of nodding, I think we're all...
Yeah, and so, once you get rid of this permanent part of it, I don't have a problem with other things. I think the Williamson Act is great, I think there are other easements that can be done that are not permanent, the county has to approve them, those are great, it's just the permanence of these things that bothers me, and bothers me a lot.
I'm, I'm clear on that, and you've been very consistent in the entire time I've known you.
So what about taking that out but leaving the rest in?
I, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with it, too.
I would like to see it acknowledged within this, so.
Okay, let me go briefly to AG one point four, which is conduct a study regarding which agroforestry methods, you know, has a list, would work best for county farmers in terms of climate mitigation practices. This doesn't seem to me to be the something the county should be doing. Hopefully, there are other people who have already done that, but again, this looks to me like a reference to the ag commissioner as to whether there's anything out there or anything the county ought to get involved in, 'cause just reading it, it's hard to see why the county, as opposed to U.C. Extension or other people, would be doing this.
Well, I, I agree, it'd be good to have a, uh, input from the ag commissioner, I, I'm not ready to say that it shouldn't be in here. I, I wanna make sure that...
Well, I don't like the county to conduct a study, that implies the county's gonna do it.
Again, you can condition it on funding. I wanted to make sure that you got the note on the AG four that I was suggesting, um, that we're taking out the conservation easement but recommending it.
Talk to me, Jim.
Oh, you're talking to me?
I'm talking to you, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Wake up over there.
AG four is recommended on page six.
You wanna add?
We wanna add it, but without the term agricultural conservation easement.
So would you like to give me some specific wording right there?
It's, it's right here.
Is it in here?
Page six.
Yeah, just minus the conservation easement. I don't have, myself, I have no problem with any of the things in the ag, I just don't know what's being done now, what is expected to be done in the future. I, I think, conduct a study, maybe we don't, maybe there are already studies out there, maybe we just need to evaluate studies, but we do that whenever we have general plan updates anyway, I mean, we're having to look at all these things and gather all this, so I, I'm not, maybe there's just a better way to word that, or, or work with our partners to evaluate agroforestry methods. I mean, I'm learning all sorts of new things, this silvo pasture I've now, never heard of.
The, the casino letter indicates that within the, within the general plan, RP dash two D, that deals with some of the subjects that's already in AG one point six, one point seven, and one point eight, so worth having the consultants look at that. And maybe, if there's something that's already in the general plan, why then put that in this?
Right. But it's the same, like, conduct a detailed countywide inventory of livestock and manure management practices to better understand. Well, I see how that is applicable here, but would the county do it, or would... Yeah, I'm just not sure.
Well...
Yeah.
Let me go to two, AG 2, which is...
But we're already going to benefit because we're going to eliminate the feedlots.
Yes.
So that's going to...
I was holding off. I want to, Commissioner Rooster...
Don't get him started.
AG-2 is implement livestock manure management strategies to reduce associated GHG emissions X percent by 2030. And there are a number that deal with that. 2.1 is conduct a detailed inventory of countywide manure management practices. 2.3 is use grants to develop a loan program for the construction of methane digesters. And 2.5 is provide assistance to farms on how to get funding for non-digest manure management techniques. 2.7 is partner with the UC Extension and county ag commissioner to work with farmers to understand manure management best practices. And this is all, you know, inventory and education and funding. I think a more direct approach would be to require the most efficient methane digesters and non-digest techniques, then calculate the emissions reductions off the inventory for 2018, scale back to 1990. I would exempt people's household milk cows, if there are any still in this county, like there used to be, and students raising and feeding farm animals to sell at the fair. Probably shouldn't have to do the methane digesters and so forth. Small-scale feeding operation, when somebody feeds a few head of cows to sell to their neighbors. But the problem, because the manure management issues really arise with feedlots and dairies, not range cattle.
Right.
And we don't have any. So we have two choices. One is to do as I suggested, which will have a, not a wishy-washy educate and pursue funding, just outlaw these things, require the very best of everything, no matter what it costs, and then the consultants can calculate the reductions in emissions off the inventory as to what that would do, and we all get credit for it. The only problem is, it's all bogus and imaginary, and I'm not really comfortable dealing with bogus and imaginary figures, but I'll leave it to the rest of you.
But what they do to calculate it, so yes, I think it might make sense, simply because we would want people to manage those kind of facilities the best possible way, and because we're not imposing anything on any existing business. But I'm fine with it, whatever. I think we do need to understand what our situation is, and our baseline now is not very realistic, but hey, that's fine.
What if we have something in there saying, eliminate dairy farms and feedlots from Calveras County?
Do we want to outlaw them? I mean, that's, but just if you're going to have one, then you're going to...
Biogas digester.
Manage it in the best possible way. That's...
Well, first, we have to get rid of what they put in because of feedlots and dairy, you know.
We don't need to worry about that. I think what, this is what we were joking about before, is like, we're ahead right off the bat. We've already eliminated them.
Well, no, we have to put something in here that eliminates them, so they can deduct from the inventory.
I think just by require, I don't think you need to eliminate them. I think you, all you need to say is that any feedlot or dairy will use these best practices to minimize their greenhouse gas emissions.
But that won't get rid of all the methane that they accounted for in the inventory.
Well, it's going to eliminate a good hook of it, right? But all of this is, even if, no matter what you do, it's going to have a low impact on the numbers. We can see it in red there, so...
So your methane digesters would only apply to your requirement, would only apply to dairy farms and feedlots?
Usually just work in dairies. That's where you see them.
Any place where you have a concentration.
Yeah, you don't see them at feedlots, because that's pretty dry operations.
Yeah.
I thought you were suggesting that individuals needed to have them, and I'm thinking, holy moly.
That's what I was hearing there.
And so what do we have to do? Walk around and pick up the plops in our rural lands?
I'm suggesting the whole, I'm suggesting the whole thing is ridiculous.
I agree.
I mean, you just can't start off with a bogus inventory that we know is non-existent. That's just not what adult people do, okay?
Right.
And then you don't play with imaginary reductions off of imaginary numbers. I mean, this is probably the most egregious example of the consultants not tailoring something to this county.
Yes. How about if we just say, eliminate from the inventory all methane effects from feedlots and dairy farms, since none existed as of the baseline?
We suggested that, and then they said the numbers were more fine-grained.
Well, but...
But they won't.
Let's just say it.
But didn't they also say it could be off by ninety-one, or ninety percent, or something?
Yeah.
I mean, that had me reeling, actually.
I know, and so, you know, we were all disturbed by that. I think we don't worry about that. I mean, we can be disturbed by it, but we're not going to worry about changing the background. But what we can do is put in here something that we feel would be reasonable. If a company came here, or somebody came and said, we want to create this, what kind of restrictions would we want to have on that operation? Put those reasonable ones in and move along.
Well, that's going to require expertise that I don't have.
That's why we're going to the people that hopefully have it, and let them condense this into something reasonable.
I don't know if our current zoning will allow feedlot or a dairy farm.
I don't know.
Oh, it will, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Ag brands.
Chicken ranches, I know all about that, don't I, Gina? I bought my place to get rid of a chicken ranch.
A1, A1 and AP, absolutely.
Yeah, well, then I should, I would be all for eliminating that possibility as a part of the GHG plan.
I don't think, I'm in favor of prohibiting feedlots and dairies in this county, across the whole county. That doesn't make sense to me. What does make sense is getting rid of what they have here, the ones I listed, because they just don't apply to what we have here. And if we want to put something in, have the ag commissioner tell us, or somebody tell us, what would be a reasonable provision to condition any future feedlots or dairies? Fine, we'll see what they come up with.
Okay.
That's what I...
And enforcing a feedlot or a dairy to put in a biogas digester is, I believe, a necessary thing to do. They're doing it all over again.
Yeah, exactly.
And if you want to have one here, this is what you have to do. You have to conform to the new standards.
Exactly.
And I agree with that a hundred percent.
Like we would do with any industrial use, without prohibiting it.
But prohibiting is never a good idea, and guess what? I live next to a chicken ranch, so I would love to prohibit some of these things, but it doesn't, it's not right.
Right, so I think we all agree conceptually on that, and Gina's captured all of that.
Right, Gina? Shorthanded?
I should write something on that. So is there any part of the ag section that you'd just like a cheerleader for?
Well, the ones that had to deal with manure management specifically were 2.1, 2.3, 2.5, and 2.7.
Right.
Now, there's a 2.6 that says utilizing CDFA guidance, develop education outreach materials around grazing practices that sequester carbon, back to the old issue of sequestering carbon doesn't count under our current system. And I don't know why the county would have to do this, but perhaps that's an issue we could pass along to the Agriculture Commission as to whether this is something she would be interested in doing or thinks is worthwhile.
I think passing all these on to the...
Yeah, I think that's really the...
Ag commissioner is a good idea.
Is there a time constraint on getting this back to the consultants? Like, I imagine it might take a little while to get this input back on the ag section.
Oh, you mean, input from the ag commissioner? We don't have a hard, fast date, but of course, the sooner the better, as far as the consultants are concerned. I mean, they do have a contract, and I'm sure that contract has some sort of an end date. That doesn't mean that we can't extend the contract, but of course, you know, working outside the scope is going to require the county to pony up some funds, probably, because there's only...
I'm wondering if it makes sense to them to get everything back to them, except, so let's say we know the ag section, we need significant input. We also need it on the solid waste piece, but the other pieces could maybe go back to them, but that might be, they might not want that.
Do you want me to send everything back to the consultant with the exception of ag and, and the waste?
I think that also is, do we want to see what comes back from...
And then do we want to have, I hate to say this, do we want to continue those two items to another commission with the invitation of integrated waste management folks and our ag commissioner's office to be included in the conversations that we're having in that meeting?
That was my question to you and to the other commissioners.
Well, I mean, if it's important enough to, you know, to adopt, then it's important enough to do it right.
Yeah, that's what I was...
You know, I mean...
Yeah, I'm a little nervous about just saying right, but whatever you want in
You guys are obviously having some anxiety over these two sections, to put it lightly.
Well, no, I think you're right. I think we just need to, we need to get their expertise.
Right, right.
But we probably will have ideas as to what form we're going to put to suggestions.
Yeah, so, you know, all of this has already gone out to them, so they've already seen it. I can specifically reach back out to Jesse Fowler, and now that I'm thinking about it, I think I just forwarded the integrated waste management section on to admin, but I'm not certain that I tagged or emailed Jen or Paul Feriani specifically, so that's my bad. I need to reach out to her today and get she and Paul on board, so they can start to get involved in this process.
And do we only have one item for, item that we got for the 26th?
We have one item. It's a sequoia-exempt conditional use permit.
Permit, yeah.
For a solar structure, and that's it.
So we could do it then.
Yeah, it's a non-controversial item. We haven't gotten a single comment from anyone. I don't, you know, probably shoot myself in the foot, but I don't see it being controversial. I think it should, you know, be relatively quick and easy, so...
I would be gone, I was going to say. Sorry. And that's okay. Ms. Edwards can sit in for me. I was just wondering, I'm not sure how useful it is for you or necessary to have counsel on the GHG piece.
Well, you've provided some good input.
So I could, I mean, I've mostly provided input on the sequel piece. I don't know, I mean, the only thing with that is, you know, the SB 1383 things, I'm the one who's been working with integrated waste, and so I don't know with that in mind. I don't know that either Sarah nor I have the time for me to educate her completely on 1383, but just trying to make it a little easier for her, because it's already enough that I'm gone for two weeks.
Hopefully, Julie, you'll get the input that the agencies are giving.
Okay.
And then you can give some specific, what the flags to Sarah is to...
That assumes that they put it together and then nothing in advance, and they don't just show up to talk to us about it on that day. So I don't know if you will have time.
Right, right. Okay.
I mean, I do trust that they, I mean, we've, we've kind of gotten it down. I trust that they're going to have a pretty decent working knowledge of what they have to do and when, and that the questions about what they're going to be required to do, I mean, I don't, I don't know how specific you're going to get. It's possible there would be legal analysis. If you had something in mind that was one of the SB 1383 requirements that we haven't really studied yet, because we haven't had to do it yet, I guess that's something that could get a little more involved.
So the reality is, the whole thing's coming back to us one more time. Once they've put this all together and done their preliminary go at calculating, they're going to be coming back, the consultants will be coming back to us, showing us...
The plan.
Where we've gotten to with the plan and telling us if we need to make tweaks, right, or suggesting do this or that to it. So there's going to be another opportunity to look at all of this. So I, I feel like we'd be okay without you, as long as you sent us maybe in advance, just anything, any kind of generic information you think we should understand about that, that whole organic waste piece, but, or you could just send the link. Here's the website with five hundred pages.
Yeah, well, the CalRecycle website would probably be your best bet. There's been, frankly, quite a bit of controversy about the way that CalRecycle has been interpreting the statutes and developing them into regs and then interpreting their own regs, but I've been working directly with Jennifer, it used to be Pratt, and now it's another name. She got married. Sashi, I think, Cashy, Cashy, Cashy. And she, so I think she'll have a pretty good handle on that, but in terms of just understanding the way things look right now, again, between now and then, there's likely to be litigation between, the time that we have to, it could change, so I don't know that the regs now are going to be the regs we're going to have to follow, or how that's going to be interpreted later on. Certainly, I could provide some information, and certainly links to the board item when we talked about our ordinance and our rural exemptions, would give you some, some background material.
I think that would be good, and I think we'll be fine, and I don't think we want to delay it. I don't, how did the rest of you feel?
I agree.
So it's okay if I tell Sarah that she doesn't have to sit for that part. She can be on call if there's...
Oh, come on.
She had so much fun last year today.
That's a good way to ensure you get to keep land use.
Okay, so are we, we're good with 26th, and invite both of those, all of those folks to join us?
So we'll bring ag and the ag folks and integrated waste management folks to the 26th.
Yeah, we will want their input on 2.2, which is a program to purchase, for farmers to purchase poultry, manure, and used bedding, and...
And 2.6?
Yeah, and 2.6 and 2.7, which is understanding manure management best practices and so forth. I mean, we're just not in a position to see whether there's any there, there.
Yeah, I think let them come back to us on all of these items.
All of them, yeah.
The entire section and...
Let's go to AG 3, which is reduce methane emissions from livestock and terri- fermentation X percent. A lot of this is dairy and feedlot, too, but 3.1 is implement grassland management strategies to provide feed digestibility alternatives, improving feed quality. I have no idea what you're talking about.
Kelp.
That would not be for our range cattle.
No, definitely not, but that's what they're talking, that's what this is referring to, is kelp.
Dairies and grass that's growing.
Yeah, kelp's...
They're shored on kelp up here.
Worked with UC Cooperative Extension to conduct a study regarding balancing and fine-tuning livestock feed rations within the county, which in turn leads to less livestock interi- terri- fermentation. Typically, the... Typically, the feed balancing here, as far as I can tell, is done by the cattle as to whether they prefer brush, grass, what kind of grass, what kind of brush, that kind of thing. So, I don't really know what this has to do with us. Annually Conduct, that's 3.3, is Annually Conduct Research on Any Upcoming Grant Funding Opportunities to Reduce Terri- Fermentation Emissions. Don't know how you're going to do that.
I don't know, but it sounds good, that one.
And 3.4, the head commissioner will love this, Provide Information and Resources on the County Agricultural Commissioner Website to Inform Farmers on Optimizing Feed Digestibility/Availability and Pasture Management Practices and How That Translates into Less Livestock and Terri- Fermentation Emissions. So, we'll see what she has to say about that.
Well, part of our great policies for future feedlots and dairies.
Yeah, but let's, I mean, just, let's ask the Ag Commissioner to provide input on those.
Okay, let's, let's talk about wildfire yet another.
I don't think that's part of this.
It's in a section though.
When I got, when I got to that on my comments, I said, I understand from the comments there will be no calculated GHG reductions regarding wildfire provisions.
It says that right here, not quantified.
Well, that's what they told us and we didn't try to cover it with them at the last session.
Right, so what?
But we should look at the strategies because it's still, I think this is probably our most important section.
I don't know why it's not quantified and I guess it's because if you have a significant lot, if you have a full amount of a but fire again, it just throws everything completely off and no way of anticipating what's going to escape.
I suspect there's just no best practices for quantifying it at this point with the changes that have happened over the last 10 years in wildfires and, you know, how do they, what do they say? It's a 100-year event, it's a 10-year event. So, nope, it's going to happen every year. But it's still something that we should be looking at.
We should have in our GHG reduction plan?
I think we should still have it in our GHG reduction plan because reducing the risk from wildfire is huge.
As somebody whose insurance has just been canceled, I fully agree.
Although I wonder why we need to adopt an ordinance that's required by state law.
Well, it's, number one, it is required, not recommended, and number two, we've already adopted it.
Yeah, it's long gone.
15.10.010.
It's in the building. I mean, they're everywhere. So, although, does everybody know the new fire safe stuff came out, new modifications because they haven't adopted the changes yet? Just in the last couple of days. Have you seen them?
I haven't.
That is a lot of strikeout.
I haven't. Well, I know that the RCRC has been fighting really hard. I have a lot of respect for RCRC's counsel. I've worked with him, he was Damon County Counsel before, very bright guy. And he's been working tirelessly to try to help CalFire and DOF understand, or BOF understand the differences that we face in rural counties compared to urban and that not everybody's ready to leave and move to the city and to a large apartment building. So, anyway, they have apparently cut out some of the most egregious, I mean, a lot of them is egregious pieces and I understand that the requirement...
I'm not part of the knowledge of what you're telling me. Most egregious...
There were some new fire safe regulations, 4290 of their code, the fire code, I think. I forgot which code.
It's like CalFire's wild land fire safe.
Yeah, and for places in the state responsibility area, there were extremely difficult building requirements coming in, such as if you are the first to build on a road that's going to serve, you know, a few other people, you would have to not just do your own driveway, but you'd have to improve the entire connector road to get to the main connector. There were some really difficult things that would make it impossible to build a single-family residence.
Our county roads couldn't even comply in a lot of areas. So, mostly roadway and driveway.
So, you're being non-controversial now.
Well, it's on an almost unreadable document. They didn't offer a clean document. So, it's got strikeouts and double strikeouts and triple strikeouts and letters in the middle of this.
It's not final yet.
No, they, the 15-day notice is out for comments. So, anyway, that will play into all of this.
Yeah.
On some level, but...
The only thing I see left in WF 1.1 is enforcing an ordinance. I mean, we have an ordinance that adopts the CalFire required 100-foot dispensable space. And so, you know, do we want...
And the enforcement is covered pretty well in this new version of the document about who they can delegate to, that ultimately CalFire has the ultimate responsibility. They can always come in and inspect.
I tend to lump WF 1.1 through WF 1.6 together because they all do deal with clearing and defensible space. My basic question is why would the county have to get involved with any of this? Because CalFire, as we said, has its defensible space requirements. CalFire does clearing projects. Calaveras Foothills Fire Safe Council does clearing projects. It gets grants and hires contractors and gets it done. SPI, here Pacific has been clearing ground around subdivisions, creating defensible space and otherwise. And I'm past what the county already has in its general plan on this subject. I just don't see any reason to do this. I mean, why would the county be purchasing vegetation clearing equipment in WF 1.3? Why would the county be applying for funding for purchase of vegetation removal equipment? If you're talking around to these big 330 horse masticators, you're talking a lot of money. This just seems to me, trying to get the county involved in stuff it doesn't have to get involved in and spend money doing.
The idea that the cost ranking is low for that vegetation clearing equipment purchase is totally unreasonable. I guess the question is, as posed by Commissioner Wooster, what's, what isn't being done by others that this would have the county jump in and do?
I think maybe the trick is to identify who those others are in our plan and that really the county's job is then to make sure that others are doing it, that it's happening.
There is something, I know Doug Oliver has been working with the fire districts to do with building permit signups when it comes to some of the fire requirements prior to issuing a building permit. And it hasn't completely been settled how that division of labor will pan out or how it can pan out. But some of the ignition risk defense comes from, I think, some of these building permit requirements.
Well, and the new thing that has the 30-foot setbacks for structures, but with a bunch of exceptions, but they're all on a kind of a case-by-case basis, which is how it's always been. But now, now years into it, they've come back around to there. And so, I know that there's, there will be room in there for things going on. Anyway, all of this seems like the county has an interest in it because the county doesn't want to burn. So, whether they do it themselves or partner with another agency or have some sort of a plan and delegate it to someone else, it does seem like the county has a responsibility and an interest in this overall. It's just that most of this is actually going to be done by somebody else. So, how do we?
Who's going to draft the language that does that?
Which one? Which I don't...
Well, what you just said, that the county has an interest in coordinating and operating.
Well, I think our consultants, I don't know if the expectation is that we are going to or our staff are going to do this research to delegate and identify who does what in all these different cases. Like facilitate the use of a goat herd to help with clearing it. So, that is happening throughout the county. There's been goat herds in the county that move around and do that.
I think they're proposing the county buying the goats though and then finding farmers to take care of them.
We have a new job for you.
Yeah, I read that and I, so those things seem like, no, the county, that there's an opportunity for somebody to have a business doing that. So, the county could facilitate it, but I don't know that they need to try to own a goat herd and find a place for the goat herd to sleep each night.
I have bad news. Goats get out on Sunday and I'm closed on Sundays, it's not...
Yeah, so I, like, our, do, what do you want from us Gina for direction to our consultants on this? Because I only have three goats. It's not going to do it. Come on, expand.
I don't know. I've become, I hate to admit it, a little brain dead here.
Yeah, me too.
They do eat the brush though. There's no question about that.
Yeah, they do a great job.
I just don't want to be in charge of taking care of them.
Well, I don't see anything in here in WF-1 that isn't being done by others where it could more appropriately be done by the county. And that includes facilitating use of a goat herd or buying a goat herd or partnering with a farmer to take care of a goat herd. I just don't see it. I mean, these are nice sounding stuff, all of it. A lot of it, but it all costs money. If you're going to buy vegetation clearing equipment, if you're going to...
Actually, I would love to see Public Works in the Road Department do some vegetation clearing on the side of the road within the county right of ways. That'd be a really nice service if they provided that because...
I think they already do though.
No, they really do not. Or at least nobody, no, they don't even do that in our neighborhood. In fact, our drainages have trees growing in them, you know?
I think they're staffing and obviously their funding is limited. They can barely get to the roads themselves, let alone...
But there's money available for wildfire reduction.
We need a grant writer.
So, who, right. So, that's the question. I'm not suggesting that the rogue eye wallys out there like pack, you can come to pack the holes either really anymore. But they're just going to, they're letting us go to gravel. So, but that's something that's of interest to the county. I mean, it really is. And so, yeah, should we be trying to obtain some money and even if you have to hire a private firm to do it?
Right.
Councilor does.
Certainly, if the cost is not low.
The cost is low in proportion to the cost of the fire?
They do do some, but it's typically hazard trees that they're afraid are going to fall across the road and hit somebody's car.
And they do spray.
Mostly doing it.
They'll spray along county roads.
Yeah, in some areas they spray.
So, they do do, they do do some. Could they do more, maybe?
I think we just don't have the resources, either money or people or equipment. But should we, is that in the best interest of the county to take that on ourselves?
I think it's a great idea as long as we can get the funding for it.
Yeah, well, that's, that's it. If there's a county role here, we need to spell out what the county, what we would like to see the county be able to do and then we say pursue funding to do that.
Well, I think Michelle's idea is a good one. If the county roadside is something the county does have control over, it would be nobody's responsibility but them to deal with it. And to the extent that there could be funding made available for wildfire mitigation purposes, that's a good thing. It also might serve some purposes like getting rid of star thistle groves along county roads.
Yeah, because individual ranchers are doing their part to get rid of it, but the county and the state do nothing.
I'm covered in fiddle neck right now.
What about, I wonder if any of that money, and this might be a question for the consultants, could be used to improve our roads in places where evacuation is a concern? Not just that they're getting grown over, but that the road surface itself isn't good. You know, it just seems like that that's something that would be a real benefit to our communities also. Improve evacuation routes?
Again, you know, pursue funds, pursue...
Pursue, right. It's always pursue funds. But I, there's, we know there's humongous amounts of money out there available for wildfire risk reduction and for greenhouse gas reduction. And if we could kill two birds with one stone, that'd be great.
And there is apparently a provision in the general plan S-3S about fuel management, but it may be restricted to new development. And then there's another one for prescribed burning. Again, I'm looking at the infecino.
And then I think maybe understanding what our fire safe councils are doing, what all these different organizations that are already working on this problem are doing.
You know, just another note on this idea of clearing along the county roads. In a letter from Mario Zeller, quoted a UC Davis study that shows that grasslands store their carbon in their roots, but forests and I assume brush stores its carbons in the wood and in the leaves. And so, when grassland burns, it doesn't throw a lot of carbon in the air, but when forests and brushlands do burn, they do throw a lot of carbon in the air. So, if you had some kind of a program to get rid of brush on county highways, which is a good thing for a lot of reasons, that would also be helpful in greenhouse gas emissions for that reason.
And drainages, I mean, there's a lot of places where it might make sense for the county to get involved if it protects the resources of the county, you know, and makes it safer for the people living there. But to the extent that we can get money to do some of those things.
Can, are you willing to try and draft some things for that?
Isn't that what consultants are for?
Well, no, but something for the consultants to chew on.
Yeah, so I'll be able to go back and listen to this discussion and I could maybe work on this section some.
Okay.
Why did I say that?
Thank you very much.
Where are we on WF-1? I know where I'm at.
Well, it's, it makes no sense.
There's nothing there but I would substitute.
I think it's fine, but we don't have a choice. So, yeah, it's all fine.
Well, but I mean, it isn't fine. It's inaccurate. We already have the ordinance and CalFire requires this defensible space.
But we, I, I don't know that.
I'm thinking of the whole section.
It's like continue, it's like continue to adopt the latest versions of the state guidelines. I mean, it, we can tweak the wording to make sense.
It doesn't say that, but you could modify the language.
Yes. You know, there are a lot of people who would love, so this partner with Calaveras County Community, that actually is valid. If there's money available, that could be provided to private landowners to help them. There's a lot of people who would love to do it and who can't afford it. So, if there's money available, we should be going after that money.
They can't afford it and they can't physically do it themselves.
Right.
But that's not how that works. They have to go through CalFire. Now, what you can do if you're a landowner is go to CalFire or go to the County Fire Safe Council, as Commissioner Latish has done in Sheep Ranch, and see if they will come in and get a grant to do what needs to be done to do clearing. So, those mechanisms are there.
Right, but I just think we need to describe it that way.
But the county doesn't have to get involved. That's my point.
So, what happens if some of those things go away? So, the county just says, we don't have any responsibility... So the county just says, we don't have any responsibility or any interest in wildfire risk reduction? And that's my concern with opting the county out entirely, because the county does have an interest.
I think at a minimum, some of this stuff should at least be educational. You know, provide information on the county web that points you in the direction of CalFire and the Fire Safe Council and whatever other entity does this kind of service.
Well, you could do that, but that's not in here.
No, you're right.
But that's what that wording can be when we're done.
That is, just you wait.
And again, if the county is the right entity to go after money for those things, the county should be willing to do that.
Who does one consult to find out the answer to that question? As far as I can tell, the county is not the one to go get the money that's being done.
That we would have to ask probably Public Works to see what their.
See, CalFire has.
Their staffing is.
CalFire has plans, they, they've figured out where they think there should be clearing projects to best protect, protect communities. And they have plans in the works, and it covers private land too.
Right.
And that, that, that's being done on a large scale in this county now.
And the CHIPS folks do a lot of that work.
And I guess the problem I basically have and where I guess I disagree with Michelle is, I just don't see a reason for the county to dedicate staff, time, and money to do any of this stuff. That's my problem.
If it's already being done.
If it's already being done by other people who know what they're doing.
So should the county not monitor what's happening and make sure that these projects are being pursued?
And the educational thing of making sure citizens are aware.
I think there's enough incentive from the fire folks to do their job.
I think, yeah, there's a lot of different groups that are involved in it. So do we all feel like purchasing vegetation clearing equipment? Well, if there's money available and Public Works could use that?
Yeah.
That's all the same thing. Okay, develop a defensible space equipment program that allows low income and disabled residents to rent equipment and retain. That's all part of what we're saying. If there's money available to help them, that's a whole different.
Well, I, I, you know, I just see, okay, here's, here's a masticator, or here's six chainsaws. Go out and do your thing, and then we end up with the county being sued because they.
Oh, no, I don't.
Not properly trained.
I think it's more like, can the county get money? And then can that money fund work on private property where the people apply and ask for?
That's, that's fine, it's just the way it was worded here.
Yeah, come, come, come by our masticator.
Yeah, right, right.
Oh, you did it on the wrong property, oops. Okay.
I'm sure you'll do it later.
Education, we already talked about, that's fine. The goat herd.
I didn't get the consensus that everyone was in favor of the goat herd.
We're all in favor of a goat herd, we're just not in favor of the county owning it.
Right, right. So no county owned goat herd.
Right.
Shall we move on?
Yeah. And there's nothing that stops somebody from renting a goat herd.
And there's lots of people that are doing it now, there's.
So there's nothing special, they, the business needs a, a business license. Maybe.
Maybe.
I think so, any business. But other than that.
But, you know, a lot of times it's just an exchange for pasture.
Right.
So there may not be any actual money exchange.
Well, I guess you could, whatever educational materials we had, the county put up on their website could say, these people own a goat herd, just like the building department says.
They could, yeah.
These people have engineering licenses.
Put a list of qualified goat herders and.
Yeah, whatever, that's minor. Okay.
You need a goat herd, here's where you go. Talk to Jesse about that.
Here's the web portal, but dedicated phone line to allow residents to report potential wildfire risks.
Dedicated means that's the only use for this phone line, right?
Yeah. Don't we have, is that code compliance and?
It is, I'm ignoring it.
I mean, you, I'm unavailable. Don't, wouldn't you report to PG&E? Or to code compliance these problems?
I would think you'd report it to PG&E.
This is, this is.
Depends off it, what it is. Or the fire department, whoever's responsible for it. You know, if your neighbor hasn't mowed their empty lot for five years.
Well, 'cause that would almost imply that the county is actually going to, you know, do the vegetation control in the PG&E line.
No, that's what we're saying. What we're saying is there's someone else. The county could provide information on who to call.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna field those calls.
You don't need a dedicated, separate.
No.
Information for that.
No.
Well, this is dedicated for all the calls that are gonna come in every day. That's the way I understand it.
And like I said, then there would be some sort of assumption that the county's gonna follow up on that.
Right.
I, I have no problem, as far as wildfire two point two, we can say communicate to PG&E, community reports for areas of wildfire risk associated. I think that's, if somebody calls and complains to the county, number one, we'd say call PG&E, but we'd better, it wouldn't be too difficult for the county to communicate to PG&E that they've received that call.
I would think they would do so anyway.
Well, let's hope so. But that gets something in here. But, you know, partner with PG, I mean, that, that seems like a strange.
Well, here's special money just for this. Apply for funding for program educational materials and operational costs through the California Climate Investment Fire Protection Grants Program.
Okay.
So.
Any problem with that?
That's.
Maybe we should say pursue funding. 'Cause apply for may not qualify as an action word.
Well.
Seems like it would be more of an.
Apply for is better, yeah.
Pursue's been endorsed.
But we're consultants, so we don't know.
That's right.
Okay, and two point four is fine. I think that can be probably consolidated with one of the other items.
As long as we get funding for it.
Right. Develop a programmatic master plan.
Basically, what it's saying is have CHIPS.
Exactly.
I don't think, I don't think they recognize that we have CHIPS.
I have hundreds of truckloads of CHIPS I get.
No, I don't have, the organization, COS, that is a biomass renewable energy facility within the county.
We, we do have a policy one point three in general plan, in general plan, to encourage the using vegetation for energy production and greenhouse gas reduction, which probably could be repeated here.
Yeah.
Past that, as we all know, Blue Mountain Electric is one that was recently approved. And as has been mentioned, CHIPS is at the forefront of this. And there are economic reasons for people to do it, and they're doing it where they can. So I think three point one, three point two are sort of.
The county would wanna continue to support those programs and new programs, similar new programs.
I think we support by getting out of the way.
Right, I think it's the same thing, we support them by.
Not hampering them.
Right.
So are we suggesting three point one and three point two should be replaced with the general plan policy one point three language?
Yeah, because I don't think that we need a new programmatic master plan or special district to plan for the development of a biomass.
No, we don't need it.
We don't need that.
Yeah, no.
And we don't need the county to be doing a sequo analysis, those people do that. I do think we ought to reference or recoup the general plan provisions on this subject. So they're part of the plan, somewhat consistent with the suggestions that were made earlier.
Yeah. So which, which ones in particular for the general plan?
I think there's policy on COS one point three and implementation measure COS two E. Are the ones I found.
COS, what were those again?
Policy one point three.
Okay, and?
Implementation measure two E.
Just quote those in here.
Well, whatever the consultants, however they wanna do it, but.
Make clear that they're covered. I mean, I, I think that's one of the things that's really important when we are trying to do a twofer here, is that it's recognizable as the provision from the general plan. So that we can say, look, this, we're implementing.
The wording is always just what snags me here. Continue to support collaborative groups engaged in environmental planning for forest restoration, helping the U.S. Forest Service as extension of staff in order to carry out forest management activities. So continue to support and collaborate with them? Extension of staff? We don't have staff to donate to the Forest Service.
I don't know that we're doing that.
I think we, we support collaborative groups, we're supportive of them.
We don't extend them.
But we don't extend our staff, that I know of. That's a weird.
So just take out a, as extension of staff?
Well, what, what county department is supporting collaborative groups and who else is involved in it? Engaged in environmental planning for forest restoration, helping the Forest Service, U.S. Forest Service.
Yeah, that's a just.
I mean, I just don't know that that's going on, or should be.
But we can continue to cooperate with the Forest Service and their efforts. I'm sure we do cooperate with them on whatever.
It's been my experience that the Forest Service tends to do what they think is best.
They tend to do what they like, but you know.
I think if I could reword it that way, it makes sense, cooperate.
Okay, which county, which county's gonna do that? Why would we do it? I mean, this is U.S. government ground.
Right. Well, not all the forest is on, so it's, I think it's a bigger picture.
But this is referring to the helping the U.S. Forest Service.
It, not, not only. Support collaborative groups engaged in environmental planning for forest restoration.
Helping.
Oh, there's no comma. Yeah, that's, that's strange. It's a big question mark.
This is another one that I don't think belongs here.
So do we engage with state and federal agencies partnered as part of the Tahoe Central Sierra Initiative to conduct fuel treatments along highway corridors, restoring ecosystem resilience and protecting communities?
Not that I know of.
If we do.
Why would we do that along highways? Wouldn't that be Caltrans? I mean, certainly we would cooperate with state and federal agencies who are working along highway corridors.
We don't know what the Tahoe Central Sierra.
Highway corridors, not even our jurisdiction.
Right, exactly. I think this could be a leftover because they work a lot over in El Dorado and, so was that in NICS?
There's a question mark, I think.
I think you can, we could change it.
We're almost done, guys. Please.
Cooperate with, with the agencies working to.
I have a wedding.
Can we just say we'll cooperate with everybody?
It's Caltrans, we're just gonna cooperate with anybody who wants to do anything.
I don't know what they're gonna ask us to cooperate with.
What are stewardship authority contracts? The flow of biomass to biomass renewable.
That's, that's a question mark, I don't know what it means.
Yeah, I guess I need to look that up.
They'd have to explain to us what, what they had in mind.
I can look it up.
And we have, on prescribed burning, we have COS dash two B.
Right.
We do have general plan provisions on that, and they are COS policies one point two and one point three and implementation measures two point B and two point C. Done that.
Amen. I, I think.
Same thing as before, we'll, we'll include the substance, but reference the general plan provisions.
Okay. I'll do my best to get to work on this section, before the twenty sixth.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy yourself.
Yeah. Okay, where's our agenda? I have completely lost track of.
There's nothing else except for maybe.
Yeah.
Planning director report. Oh, do we have another public comment?
Is there a commissioner report?
No, no.
Not for me.
Yeah, I'm tired.
I would like to ask about if we have any sense of the schedule for the update to the zoning code.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
I think you have to speak louder.
He's up next, so. Yeah, our, our staffing is a little challenging right now.
Now, Madeline is still on the staff?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Madeline is still with you?
She is still with us, yes.
Good, 'cause I mean, I heard references to you and Tim. Didn't hear a reference to Madeline in something recently, and I thought, oh my.
Oh, no, Tim was on the, he was part of the county staff on that committee. But of course, Tim is gone.
Oh, Tim is gone.
He's moved on to another position in another county. And so that was, that was, that only particular reference was the fact that he was previously on that working group.
So the staff right now is you and Madeline and the planner director?
Yes, we have two planner, two, uh, two planner ones on staff. And we've got, that would be Catherine Stefani and John Franklin. And then we've got Madeline as our current planner three. And then I am currently sitting as, in a temporary position as a planner four. And then we have Gabriel.
Can you hear me? I, I pushed something and my screen just kinda went crazy, but I've been listening to all the deliberations. Again, thank you for your thorough attention to this, to this matter. It seems like we're not totally done yet. We raised some very critical questions. And I think I would rather we did this than, 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 than the other way around. So I know the consultants are pushing to kind of get things, you know, before the board, but I think I like this particular vetting process so that when we're finally done, we know we're done, we know we have read every word, we have dotted every I, and we have crossed every T. So I, I, I feel very comfortable with, with what you're doing.
Great.
Do we have an update on the zoning code?
Well, the, um, one of the things, one of the things, the zoning code, I, I think that is something that Gina can probably provide. I think that is something that Jack can probably provide an update on. But as far as the bigger picture of some of the general plan, things that have to be implemented, one of our planners who recently went away on medical leave was supposed to be working on a particular item, which is the one regarding oak trees and so on and so forth. I happen to have written quite a few pre-ordinances, so I can bring that to the table pretty quickly, at least get that portion of it moving forward. We've had one meeting with the consultant working on the zoning code. The ideas I am bringing to the table, unfortunately, are not getting... are not going to be, at least from what I understand, are gonna be implemented in the zoning code update because the task given to the consultant is just to update the existing zoning code rather than modify. And there's a big difference between just updating the code and modifying the code to make it more user-friendly for us, but also to give us some more administrative processes whereby we don't have to bring every single code deviation to the planning commission. Now, you may like to discuss every deviation from code, but I think you're gonna get tired very quickly when they're bringing to you a six-inch code deviation for a variance, for example, or a two-inch code deviation for a variance. Why do you think... Now, this... Those kinds of things, if we developed the administrative processes, we can actually do. I mean, we will still do... We'll do... It'll be like a mini planning commission, but we're not involved in planning commission. It'll be a staff-level decision, which is that appeal... Can be appealed to the planning commission and go through that chain. Or the planning commission itself would actually appeal the decision that we made administratively rather than sitting around and taking what you might consider to be, you know, kind of miniscule deviations from code. So, those are not currently part of the work that the consultant has been asked to do. And I don't really feel comfortable kind of changing things at this particular time. But at the same time, I don't wanna put myself in a position whereby we spent all this money to do a zoning code update and then we're quickly amending it because it doesn't really give us the useful tools that we need. Now, I don't know if you have any comments as to whether or not taking some... Not all. I mean, you know, you're still gonna be dealing with deviations that are, you know, of a greater percentage. But if there's a one-inch deviation in a side yard setback requirement or a front yard setback requirement, I'm not sure if you wanna spend an entire planning commission meeting considering dealing with that particular type. This is something that, using the same findings, you know, in the planning and development code, we can actually, at a staff level, make those kinds of decisions. Again, they would be appealable. They will be appealable to the planning commission, definitely. But it will not be an item that we would normally schedule and ask you to sit on. But if you are interested in a decision that was made by staff, then you can... You can definitely appeal it, and then you can hear it. And the same would go for things, you know, that we consider to be minor in nature, which currently we don't have the administrative processes to decipher at our level. Those kinds of things are what I would like to see in our zoning code update. And then, as we move along, we can start addressing some of the bigger issues regarding implementing some of the policies in the general plan itself and any other big projects that may come our way.
I don't feel like we see a lot of those little tiny issues anyway.
Yeah, I don't need to make a decision on tiny issues.
I don't think it even would get anywhere. Nobody'd even know about us.
Right, right, right. But, you know, by the way the code is now, I mean, if we do have those kinds of issues, they would come to you because you are the body that is designated to handle any kind of deviation from code. So, we haven't seen them yet, but it doesn't... We're not gonna see them. And I think as we get a little bit more, as our development processes become more sophisticated, as more homes are built, hopefully, and we're gonna... We will gradually see changes in the nature of the county, those kind of things are gonna start getting more prevalent. And so, I'm just kind of, you know, anticipating that, you know, some of those types of things would be... Could be handled at a lower level than the planning commission.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah. I mean, it would depend on what it is. I... Because we have been tormented with those items thus far.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah. You know, and remember, I kind of made up an early... You haven't been tormented this far, but imagine a scenario where somebody wants to put a structure within a setback and the structure encroaches six inches beyond the required setback. I mean, is that something, you know, you would like to see? Is that something we say? No, six inches. Well, you know, this would be done at a staff level. So, when you start seeing those kinds of things on a regular basis, you're gonna wonder if we could use the planning commission's time for some more of the more difficult and challenging issues rather than minor deviations. I call them minor because, yeah, they're, you know, we're talking inches. Now, if somebody wants to put, you know, build a house within... Right on the property line, for example, you know, not only would you see those kinds of things, but, you know, the building living and safety department, the uniform building coordinator, and all those things are gonna come into play. We're not going to, at a staff level, want to accommodate that. But, again, we haven't been seeing that because there are a lot of things that are going on, you know, that don't come to the surface because of the rural nature of our county, you know. You know, an example of one we see this morning, when you're doing a code compliance, when you sat as a different body, those kinds of things, you know. There's probably many, many more of them going on, but if you have two neighbors who are not combative, we will never see that. And there's a lot of things that have gone on that we haven't seen, but it doesn't mean they don't exist.
I'd have to... I don't have... Object to not seeing minor items. I mean, we have a lot of things that can handle at the administrative level now and that they can appeal them to us.
Absolutely. Everything that we do at administrative level is appealable...
Yeah.
To the mission. Even staff decisions and interpretations of code...
Right.
Are appealable to your county.
And that makes sense.
Right. So, I would think mine is...
Yeah. Or rather, maybe what I should be asking is, what kinds of administrative decisions would you not like to see? I mean, what kind of, you know, code deviations would you not like to see that you would think, "Well, you know, we have some qualified competent staff people. They should be handling something like this." Again, you're not being inundated at this particular time, so it may not be something that you may have thought about or considered. But as the county gets a little bit more developed, we're gonna start seeing these things that we haven't seen before.
So, the bigger issue for me is things like the PD overlay, which is a big conceptual issue that needs to be looked at. And either it needs to go away or it needs to be modified in some way that little tiny issues don't require the entire process. And, of course, that one's near and dear to my heart, so...
Right. I mean, that's a good example. That's something that we can... That's something we can look at. And I don't know if that is one of the items being considered in the update that we're currently going through. So...
I think we were told that it was.
It is.
And we have made... We have made a suggestion that that be expedited and be a standalone issue.
We have, but I don't know if... Because I don't know what's going on exactly with the zoning update. So, I had sort of thought that some of those more conceptual things might come to us separate from the zoning update as a whole...
Yeah.
To see if we could find the line of whether we need it at all, or is the line... Does the line fall somewhere? But, so, that's the one that jumps out because that's the one that we see.
That's the one we all see most often.
Yes.
That we're all very concerned about.
Yeah. So, I'm sure we'll hear more on that.
Absolutely.
But we definitely don't feel that little tiny modifications to someone's building need to show up at the planning commission.
Unless it's appealed.
The way it works now is it does not unless there's an appeal, correct?
No, you're incorrect. All plan development permits come before you.
PD, but other than PD.
Huh?
Other than PD, if somebody wants a variance or whatever.
No, variances are administrative unless it's as-built.
Right.
And things like short-term vacation rentals down in copper, special event permits.
Right.
Any administrative AUP permit is all administrative, reviewed and approved or conditionally approved or denied by the director.
And that seems like it's working fine.
It's working perfectly, yeah. I mean, I'm not saying that the process itself, you know, it could be modified. You know, I think we have some challenges, especially with the special event permit section in addition to the short-term vacation rental section. Those, I think, need some modifications. But the things like the variance seems to work... Is working just fine. You know, those findings are mandated through the state of California, so there's not much that we can do. And the process is pretty minor because it is an administrative process right now. But the things, the bigger things are like the PD combining zone and, you know, the impacts that that has on individuals that are having to apply for those permits. And, you know, trying to find, make those findings and of consistency when you don't have things like guidelines, you know, no architectural guidelines in addition to, you know, just the sheer application fee of having to apply to do nothing more than add, you know, a bathroom, which is something that will be coming to you onto the back of your house.
Right. Yeah. So, I think there are things like that that rightfully could use some modification. There was something else I was thinking of, but now it's gone.
No, it's on later.
Well, there are a lot of things that are just bringing our zoning code, you know, to alignment with current state, right, requirements. Yeah. So, we'll all get an update on that and some education. Are we ready to adjourn?
I'm ready.
I'm ready. Thank you so much for everybody for sticking with us for such a long day.